Password is expired and must be changed.
I hate that. Why do they do that? Mine's not that long, but you have to change it all the time and they don't warn you that it's going to happen. Alfonso. Blame it on Alfonso.
Madam Mayor, it's 6:06 and we are live.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I know. Good evening, everyone. Oh, I like this. Good evening and welcome to the November 4th, the year's gone by so fast, 2025 Regular City Commission Meeting of the City of Lake Worth Beach. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Segred.
Present.
Thank you. The invocation or moment of silence will be by Sarah Malaga. I will lead the pledge.
Please rise.
Thank you. Think about it. Do you ever think about what you think about or recognize that your thoughts have power? Or consider how, over time, you'll become what you think? Writing from a Roman prison to the believers in the Greek city of Philippi, the Apostle Paul knew firsthand the importance of battling hard things with true thoughts. He regularly dealt with opposition, weakness, hardship, and persecution. But Paul also knew that Jesus followers were called to a different way of thinking. Finally, brothers and sisters, whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, if anything is excellence or praiseworthy, think about such things. Even in a broken world, God has created good things and he's empowered us to notice and praise him for it. Follow Paul's advice, practice positive thinking. So today, think about what you think about. Search for a rhythm of gratefulness, gratefulness and worship. Thank God for the opportunities to shine light into a dark world. And wherever you go, look for what is good, pure and true.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one way, eight and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm getting there. I'm getting there. You're not going to get us to do it. We finally did it today.
Are there any additions, deletions, or reordering?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Due to?
Presentation B, the CRA Quarterly Update, will be on the December 16th regular meeting instead of tonight.
All right, thank you. We're taking that off.
And Madam Mayor, may I request that new business item B, the fee waiver request for the children, be taken off? We have some questions that we need to resolve.
We're taking off B?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. I support that. Yep. Thank you. Anybody else? Get it while it's hot.
Anthony has his.
Mr. Segred?
Can you see his light?
No, it's behind the, you're behind the pumpkin.
The pumpkin? Okay. Can you see it now?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have some discussion in a pre-agenda meeting, but I wanted to make sure since we really can't take actions in a pre-agenda meeting, I'd like to add for discussion at our next meeting that we discuss that there be no changes to planting trees in the parks without commission review of the designs for that, as well as giving direction to staff to put a hold on such plantings until we have that discussion at our next meeting.
I can. Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second? What's the motion that we?
The motion is to have a discussion at our next commission meeting as to whether or not we shall require designs to be presented to the commission before any planting of trees or major landscaping changes happen to our public parks without it coming before the commission. Second to that is between now and when we discuss that, to put a halt to all plantings in the public park that have not had designs approved by the commission.
I'll second. All in favor?
Is there any discussion?
I'm saying we're bringing this forward for discussion, correct?
That's the most.
So the motion is to put it on next.
For discussion.
For discussion.
Okay.
On next meeting as well as to put a pause between now and then.
When is the next meeting and is there room on that agenda? I guess would be my question. Sorry.
Well, it'd be December, whatever.
I don't know how full our agendas are.
What's today? The 4th? So the 18th?
We'll check the second meeting in November, but we should.
Well, we don't have a vote yet whether there's support for that. Did you want to discuss the motion, Mr. McVoy?
Yeah, I just, we received.
Folks, folks, we really need to quieten here. Thanks.
We received an email clarifying the concern over the circle of trees planted in Bryant Park. The statements made by Commissioner Segred were in fact not factual on a number of counts. And so, and Commissioner Segred has been concerned about how fast we are moving through or slowly through important items. I find it interesting that he's proposing to take time for something that has a procedure. We have a tree board. Things go to the tree board. This item did go to the tree board. It did go to staff. And they are not hedges. They are trees and you can see under them just fine.
And they came to this, it came to the commission.
So I would, I think that's a waste of time. We have other more important things to do.
Okay. Mimi, did you want to talk about it?
Oh, no, I don't want to talk about it. I have something else.
Did you want to? I mean, I'll support having a conversation. That doesn't mean that I'm one way or the other. Yeah. I mean, I know. Again, I really, and. I mean, I think that we. I think we're micromanaging just a little bit. We have a tree board for a reason. Yeah. I mean, we have a tree board. The circle of trees came before the commission. It was approved. I don't really know what the problem is. I mean, I would vote no because I think that we have.
With all due respect, Madam Mayor, that it never came before the commission. It was presented in public comment. We did not follow the process. There was no vote.
Have a conversation about it.
And my motion is not particular to this thing in particular, the one example. This is more of a broad policy for the future.
I think that they generally come to us anyway with, you know, with them. There's the playground recreation. That all came to us.
Of course, but this did not.
You hate that circle of trees, Mr. Segred.
Madam Mayor, it's not about the circle of trees.
All right. Well, that's what you brought it up with last time.
I would like to call the question.
You did say some things that were actually not true.
I would like to call the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it passes three to two.
Just for conversation.
For conversation. Okay. Any other additions, deletions? Are your lights on for a reason?
Yes, I have one extra.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion for reconsideration of our vote on the K Street parking garage because I would like us to reconsider the four-story larger footprint design.
Are we going to undo everything we did? Is there a second for that? Calling again.
Can I second just ask why? I mean, I'll second just for discussion real quick.
Okay.
So discuss. I just want to know why.
So the smaller footprint design will have trouble with larger vehicles, including trucks and large cars. It was brought forward for a motion which had at least two commissioners' support for the four-story design with the larger footprint. I believe that as far as a compromise, that four-story design has the same number of parking spaces as the four and a half story design. So I would be in support of it. I feel that the functionality of the garage is more important than doing the smaller footprint and moving that building. Also economically, they turn out to be about the same, if not cheaper, to do the four-story design without moving of the building.
Does that mean that the house won't get moved or does that affect the house?
That is correct. It means the house would not get moved.
Well, you know, I'll second that.
Yeah.
To vote or reconsider?
Yes.
All the questions?
There was a second? You seconded it? Okay. I mean, I'm very concerned because we just voted on this. This is something that we've been talking about for months and months.
So just say no.
It's just a procedural thing. You can disagree. That's fine.
I have concern about this pattern of going back on things that have been done already. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It loses three to two. Okay. Anything else? So anybody? Thank you. That was fun.
The mayor?
Yes?
We need a vote on the amended agenda, please.
I know. I'm just about to go. That's why I was asking.
I'm sorry.
Had anything?
Motion to approve.
Wait, wait, wait.
You have a question?
No, no.
The motion to reconsider failed, so.
Failed. No, no, he's, we're good.
You don't have anything at this time.
You have nothing else at this time.
Not at this time.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
And the motion is to approve it.
Put the light on to talk instead of the microphone.
That's good. Okay, with those with new business B and presentations B being eliminated from the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Proclamations. We have some folks here that we want to recognize for this for the Veterans Day. If you're here because of the Veterans Day proclamation, I'm told some folks will be here.
I saw them.
Come on up.
There we go.
Good evening. I'm going to read the proclamation and then I'm going to ask you to give us a talk and I'm going to ask, we're going to pass these out because this is something I want to add. Proclamation. Whereas, it has long been the custom to commemorate in November 11th, the anniversary of the entering of world, the ending of World War I, Armistice Day on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11 month, by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle, to expand the significance of that commemoration so that grateful nations might pay attention to, may pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all of its wars who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation. Congress changed the name of the holiday to Veterans Day in 1954. And whereas, the city of Lake Worth Beach recognizes that freedom and security we enjoy as Americans have been preserved and protected by the courageous service and sacrifice of the men and women of the United States Armed Forces over the past 250 years since their founding by the Continental Congress. And whereas, our nation's veterans have answered the call to duty with honor and courage, serving in times of war and peace, at home and abroad, to defend democracy and uphold the values of liberty and justice for all. And whereas, it is fitting that all residents of Lake Worth Beach join together in expressing our heartfelt gratitude to those who have served and continue to serve our nation in uniform. And whereas, Veterans Week provides an opportunity for our community to honor veterans from all branches of the military, to recognize their families for their steadfast support and to reflect on the enduring contributions veterans make to our neighborhoods, schools, and workplaces. And moreover, there are approximately 2,000 veterans living in the city of Lake Worth Beach. And whereas, the city of Lake Worth Beach encourages all citizens to participate in ceremonies, educational programs, and community events recognizing Veterans Week, especially our Veterans Day celebration in Bryant Park on November 8th, 2025, and to extend our appreciation to veterans for their service and dedication to our country. And now therefore I, Betty Rash, Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim November 4th to the 11th of 2025 as Veterans Week and call upon all residents to join in honoring the valor, commitment, and sacrifices of our veterans. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Lake Worth Beach to be affixed this day, this fourth day of November, 2025. Please introduce yourselves. You've got to go there. You've got to turn on the mic and you got to hold it right by your mouth or nobody will hear you.
I'm Corey Price. I'm the Executive Director of the West Palm Beach VA Healthcare System. I represent the seven counties and approximately 60,000 veterans that we serve.
Big job.
I'm Joseph Melzer. I'm the commander of the American Legion Post 47 here on Dixie Highway. Also a Lake Worth native, born and raised, graduated Lake Worth High in 1975. Served the United States Air Force for nine years.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andres Grisales. I'm not as important as these two gentlemen, but I am a resident of Lake Worth and a 10-year Army veteran and I will be the guest speaker this weekend.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. Is Stuart Sword here? Is he in here? Stuart, come on up. We have a couple of veterans in this office in this. I know.
I love being corrected.
Please introduce yourself.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Many of colleagues know me through professional work and stuff like that. I'm a 26-year veteran of the Army. I served almost eight years in Iraq and Afghanistan.
Thank you very much. Ms. Malaga?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you a veteran?
I.
Could you explain?
United States Army, year and a half. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Any other veterans in the, in the office, in the room? Come on, give us your name and what you did.
Stand up.
Come on. Ramsey's here. We know her. Come on up. She always sits where it's hard to get out.
That's her spot.
That's her spot. Different role.
She's got the best view of outside. She's happy before we do.
Come on up. I want the folks that have served to be recognized.
For sure.
Ramsey McLeod, seven and a half years, US Air Force.
Thank you.
Stay up here. All the veterans should stay up.
Jason Lopiccolo, United States Navy.
Thank you.
Jim Pellegrino, three years, United States Army Aviation.
Thank you.
Joe Egley, United States Marine Corps, 1965 through 69. Vietnam Service, Bay of 66 through February 68.
And former commissioner of the city of Lake Worth.
Yes, ma'am.
Good to see you. This is such a great opportunity for me. Last year, someone suggested that we do a light up the bridge for the veterans. And I thought, well, that's a great idea. And we did it and we had over 100 people. And here's the deal. And everybody in this room, I've got folders to hand out. What we do is we meet at Bryant Park about five o'clock just before sunset, bring a flashlight. I give one-third of the people blue gels and rubber bands to put your flashlight, make it blue. The other third, red, same thing. And then, of course, one-third stays white. We line up, we walk up to the bridge, so blue first, white, and then red. So when you look, it's red, white, and blue. We have wonderful photographers. We all turn on our flashlights and that red, white, and blue reflects in the intercoastal. And it makes for the most beautiful photograph. And I love that we're doing this on the 8th. I think it's spectacular. But on Veterans Day, I thought it was good to have something and it doesn't cost anything and you just take, you show up, you walk up, you go home. So I'm going to pass these out. We had over 100 people last year and I would like to double that this year. I've got plenty of gels and plenty of rubber bands. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to pass these out to you guys and I'm going to take it back to your, you have participated before. And I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the folks in the audience, take one and pass it along, share if you can. And then the commission's going to come down for a photograph with all of our veterans. And I want to thank Deborah Providence for providing the graphics for this. I'm useless and she just did it so beautifully.
Everybody.
Yeah, all of them.
Stu, get in this picture. Good to see you.
Well, I appear every six months. Don't leave us.
We go back so often. Catherine, one. Thirty-one more. Eighteen. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Nice to meet you. Please tell me if you love me. Okay, good to see you. You want that? And then we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, in all things.
We should share.
Hopefully they picked that up because I was on my boat. I'm like, this is ridiculous.
You were going to give us a little talk?
I was. I was invited, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioner. It's an honor to be here and kind of talk about veterans. I've made my life out of serving our men and women and it's an honor to be here. You know, I stand here on behalf of the West Palm Beach VA Healthcare System as we join the city of Lake Worth. And I think I had some slides. I don't know if you can pull those up. Perfect. Just a few of these, just to kind of support my talk with you today. When I reflect on the meeting of Veterans Week, I think of three simple words, honor, service, and innovation. We honor those who answered the call to serve our country. We serve our veterans by ensuring they receive the highest quality of care and support. We innovate new ways to meet their needs because our veterans deserve nothing less. If you can go to the next slide. Okay, thank you. Let me share how the West Palm Beach VA Healthcare System is putting those words into practice here in South Florida in partnerships with cities like Lake Worth Beach, community organizations, and veterans themselves. Next slide. First, we mark a major milestone. Our VA Medical Center on June 25th, 2025 celebrates 30 years of service to America's heroes. Since opening in 95, what is now the Thomas H. Corey VA Medical Center has grown into a full-service general medical and surgical hospital, offering primary care, emergency services, mental health, surgery, physical rehabilitation, radiology, dentistry, and much, much more. This evolution underscores our commitment to excellence and continual growth in meeting the evolving needs of our veteran community. Next slide. Second, we are proud that our VA has been recognized for excellence and specialized care. For example, our ALS clinic was named a in recognized treatment center by the ALS Association, the first and only VA in Florida to receive that distinction. And our community living center was awarded the committed to care excellence recognized by the age-friendly health system for its holistic care approach to older adult veterans. These accolades reflect not just what we do, but how we do it with compassion, respect, and innovation. Next slide. Speaking innovation, our dental service recently set a national record by becoming the only VA in the nation, the first and only to offer the FDA-approved robotic Yomi surgical system for dental procedures. So think about that. This capability means less invasive surgery, faster recovery, and better outcomes for our veterans. This is a concrete example of advancing care for those who served and certainly deserve it. Next slide. And lastly, I think you are on the right slide if you go back one. Lastly, because caring for our veterans means caring for their whole well-being, we are launching a first of its kind and the only in the country Warrior Wellness Food Locker at our medical center. This program addresses food insecurity by offering fresh nutrition food that is prescribed specifically for that veteran and provided and tailored and the unique wellness needs. This is not just healthcare, it's whole healthcare. Next slide. Why is this relevant today? Because our veterans in our neighborhoods and our communities need to be celebrated. They need to be taken care of and they need to be part of a thriving environment. That's where I call you today. As we celebrate veterans and Veterans Week, I also ask that you consider those veterans that may be struggling and may need your support. So I ask you in the audience to consider saving this number in your phones right now. And that is the Veterans Crisis Line. For a veteran that may be in need, that we can support dial 988 and then press one. So today, as Lake Worth Beach officially proclaims this week as Veterans Week, I ask you all to join us in three commitments. Recognize the service of veterans, not just this week, but every week. Engage with programs that support them, whether healthcare, housing, employment, or the most vital suicide prevention. As a community, you must lock arms in making sure we prevent veteran suicide. And lastly, collaborate across city, county, VA, and community organizations to ensure no veteran falls through the cracks. To my fellow veterans here today, thank you. Thank you for your service, your sacrifice, your resilience. We stand ready as your partners and advocates. Together, there is place and time. In this place and time, we will continue to build a future that lives up to the promise we made when we asked our men and women to serve. A future in which every veteran in Lake Worth Beach and across South Florida has access to the care and the opportunity and the dignity so richly they deserve. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Are you being affected by the, I mean, are you still being funded and all, all that?
The VA is very lucky that we have what's considered an advanced appropriation. So our appropriation goes through this following year. So most elements of the VA are, are still providing services, especially the healthcare components that the veterans we have in beds in our hospital day are going to continue to be taken care of. There are some minor support services that are for.
Okay. Thank you so much. And thank you for the work that you do. And our vets shouldn't need food. They should have it. I mean, it's just ridiculous. But thank you very much for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, public participation of non-agenda items and the consent agenda. Do I have any cards? I figured I would. Thank you. He's very organized. Ginny Powell, followed by Catherine Colmeyer, followed by Peggy Fisher, followed by Jill Carlin.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I hate to be the first one. First of all, welcome back. Oh, okay. Did you get the name and address? Welcome back, Vice Mayor. It's good to see you back in the cell again. Even if you don't always vote the way I prefer, but anyway. And no, try to make it not personal. And Mr. Brown, I want to thank you for your service, which I failed to do at the last meeting when I found out that you will no longer be in this position. But you will be still the Director of Public Works, I think. I, maybe not. Oh, you're leaving.
Anywhere now.
Oh.
No.
So something's changed since.
We're having a search, but he's there.
Oh, okay. Well, not yet, but I just, it came up. Several people thanked him the last time. And we have worked very well. And one place we worked well with him and his staff was on this tree planting. We worked very closely with, well, really more the NEST Committee. We're closely with Public Works. We're closely with Leisure Services. In addition, the Bryant Park Neighborhood Association, who have come out and volunteered to water. And I believe we also are someone other representative of the city worked with PBSO to make sure that, you know, it wasn't going to shield anybody sleeping in the bushes from the sheriff's office. I, you know, and moving on then to the process, I think that what Commissioner Segred has suggested might be micromanaging a little bit. I think you all have enough to do. I think this was cleared with enough people. I hope we can move on with this process and keep planting trees. Thank you for your commitment of $50,000 to plant trees. And some money also came from the tree board through, not from the tree board, but through the
Tree Fund.
The Tree Canopy Restoration Fund. So those are the main things. I think the pausing of rules and regulations is bothering me a little bit. I mean, we've paused. Do we ever vote on artificial turf? I don't think so. We've, how many, we've paused that for at least a year, maybe two years. Then the pausing that came up the last meeting, pausing of the tree abuse, which I mean, pausing, they say, oh, that's not going to matter, but I think it might. Lots of people cut back their trees really hard and they ask the landscapers to do that because they don't want to trim the tree more than is really proper and appropriate for the health of the tree. So there's more to it and I do have concerns about pausing rules. I'm not saying that we don't need some changes, that we need some processes better defined, but we can't do this all at once. The William Water section is really, really overburdened. We haven't had a tree board advisor, a formal one for over a year or about a year, maybe a little more than a year. Two staff members have been struggling to manage that. It's, it's hampered us. So I just, I mean, that is a big deal to revise the landscaping ordinance.
Thank you. Have time.
Keep that in mind, please, as you move forward with your business. Thank you.
Ms. Colmeyer?
Catherine Colmeyer, 503 First Avenue South. I don't know why I do this really. But I just feel this does need saying. As a resident commented at the last commission meeting, this is a country of laws. And at every meeting, the commissioners pledge allegiance to the flag and the republic for which it stands. And the Constitution is the supreme law of the republic. It is well documented that in the last months, people are being taken from the streets, um, identified through racial profiling, which is illegal, and taken to dissension centers without due process. This is happening here in Lake Worth, as I'm sure you are all very well aware. Your guest, Cynthia, spoke about this at the previous commission meeting from her own experience. Constitution guarantees due process to all people, whether citizens or non-citizens. That's Amendment 14. So if you take your pledge of allegiance seriously and your duties as Betty's giving a little shake of her head, and I'm not really sure why, because there are things you can do. You could even write a strongly worded letter to somebody. Although I don't know how much good that would do, but there are things you can do. There are people to, you can reach out to who address what is happening now in our city, which affects us all and which does matter. And there has been a resounding silence from most of the members of this commission. And I'm sure in your hearts, you believe that you think this is important and that you really love justice and the law. And I just want to see some evidence of that. And I'm sorry if I'm making you roll your eyes and think I'm just a big pest.
Thank you. Peggy Fisher, followed by Jill Carlin.
Peggy Fisher, 508 North A Street, uh, and the proud daughter of two veterans of World War II. The city of Lake Worth has a commission manager type of government. It is not a strong mayor government. And although it seems we do have some things that happen that way, um, I went to Bryant Park and looked at the planting of the trees, which was very far in from the, what was described as a site when it was discussed in um, public participation. It wasn't discussed, it was just described. Um, you all never publicly discuss that. Beyond that, the parks in this city belong to the residents of this city. And if you're going to make changes, do things in those parks, then it needs to be transparent to everybody in the city. NEST is not a formal organization of the city, city, part of the city. It is a group, just like our neighborhood associations. Um, the Tree Board has not published minutes since July of last year. There is never any backup on their meetings, so you never know what, other than what's the few words on the agenda, what they're discussing. And unfortunately, the name of our late arborist still appears on their webpage, which is atrocious. Come on, city, we have to do better. But we, if we're commission government, that means you all have input. Not one person makes a decision. Not one person has a group come to them and say, we want to do this, go ahead and do it. Uh, it gets discussed in a public forum. And that is what it needs to be, because these parks are used by the residents of our city and are used for events, just like we're talking about the Veterans Day event. And after that, there is an NA PC event to get donations that will be shared with the schools within our city. Those events are impacted by where those trees are planted. And this is where you all are expected, at least by me, to do your job. You did not discuss it. It was seven minutes of public comment and a handout to you all, and that was it. I didn't see it. It's not on any website. It's not on the website. So that's not being public. And I appreciate what NEST does. I appreciate what the Tree Board does, but there has to be a little bit more provided to the public. Now that we know in the public, says it's discussed, if there's no minutes.
Thank you. Jill Carlin. Yeah, glad you're back, sir.
Yes. Good evening. I'm Jill Carlin and I live at 2381 Sunset Avenue. And I'm speaking simply as a citizen of Lake Worth Beach tonight, a city that I like very much. And especially because of its 20th century South Florida beach vernacular architecture and its small town charm. I've stood here before on December 6th, 2021 and July 5th, 2022 to share a plan for preserving our city's unique character. In those presentations, I spoke of protecting our golf course, the Gulf Stream Hotel, the L and M Street Corridor and our beach complex, actually our beachfront. I asked that we treat our city as a living historic treasure, much like Williamsburg, Virginia. Part of that vision included alternate, alternative transportation, a way to reduce the noise, the pollution in the cars downtown and at the beach. I proposed a gondola, think ski lift, in partnership with Palma, one of the oldest, most respected gondola companies in the world, connecting Palm Beach State College to the beach. Imagine visitors gliding quietly above our streets, seeing the charm of our town from the sky rather than idling in traffic. This isn't about nostalgia, it's about preserving through innovation. We can move people efficiently without destroying the scale and character that make Lake Worth Beach special. Sadly, more and more large-scale developments threaten to Miami-ify or Delray-ify our last pocket of authentic old Florida. I think it's what we all love. We must act now to preserve what remains, our architecture, our neighborhoods and our green spaces. And that brings me to our final point, my final point, the property on the ridge, the last mango farm in our city for over. I know. For over 20 years, neighbors have fought to protect it. It sits on the highest ground in the county, blessed by the winds that make it the finest mango-growing area around. The Smith family who farmed there left a living legacy, one remembered fondly even by you, Mayor, who once enjoyed those mangoes and the fellowship they inspired. I ask that we as a city work together to preserve that land, not just as an open space, but as a symbol of who we are. Let's raise the funds, seek partners and say clearly to developers that Lake Worth Beach is not for sale. Let's keep our town's beauty, history and humanity intact for ourselves, for our visitors and for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Oh.
Ouch. Oh. For the non-agenda? For non-agenda. Oh, okay. Mr. Schultz, you are one of the non-agenda, go ahead, come on up. You're a little late, but we'll. Honey, I got you beat.
Good evening, everyone. Alex Schultz, 612 Second Avenue South. One, one of the things I don't think the city's done, and I give you the reply email from our great clerk, and she actually does a very great job here, Ms. Coyne, that apparently we don't have a wastewater study. Wastewater study that's been done recently. And if you take a look at the old town, uh, a lot of the wastewater goes the Second Avenue South eventually then down to the Master Pump House. So we've stuck in the Bohemian, the Madison's coming on, motor's coming on. So how old is this system? Is it 100 years old? You have these old pipes and you're sticking all these big projects onto it. We need a wastewater study. Uh, Second Avenue South was relined, but relining doesn't expand the size, it only relines it. And we constantly have root problems here in the city. And so what you need to do is, we don't have a wastewater study, we have a parking study, which is basically been manipulated and is false and is a fraud in the public. We need a traffic study. We need a fire safety study before we move forward with the motor. In particular, you, you need to look at getting that wastewater study because everything is just backing up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you need to see your legs on?
Yeah, but it's for the consent agenda. I have a question on one of the items.
Do you want to pull it?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, do a motion.
Um, I'd like to pull from the consent agenda number or letter C, please.
Um, just second.
Pulling it for discussion.
Okay.
From consent, putting it to where we can talk about a business. Um, I mean, we can either, I, I'm open to talking about it now or putting it at the end of the business, wherever you guys want to.
Okay. Um, well, Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor.
How are you?
Following recent precedent.
Yep.
Um, why don't we discuss it now and then you can vote on the consent agenda?
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, a second to talk about it. Any, all in favor? Uh, thank you.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Uh, Mr. McBoy.
Thank.
Um, can I, may I ask a question of staff, leisure service staff? Stuart, are you still here? Where did he go?
Stuart.
Stuart, are you back there?
I.
Stuart Sword, Assistant Director of Leisure Services.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, Stuart, I'm looking at the, um, Exhibit B, the summary of the changes. Do you have that in front of you?
I do.
Okay. Um, I have two questions on it. Number one is regarding the golf lessons. And there's a range from $40 to $70 for, I just want to know why, why is it a range? Have we not picked a price yet?
No, so the range would be really based off the season. So in-season, out-of-season, the typically the, the rates would change. And we did a comparison with other municipalities surrounding both north and south. And that range is, you know, equal to what other municipalities are charging.
Okay, I just didn't know why there. So if I want to learn to play golf, I should do it in the summer?
Correct.
Okay. All right, got that. Can, is there, I mean, do we need to say that? Cause I mean, I, I have no idea why.
We can, we could definitely drill it out more. It's hard to kind of align it to, you know, a certain timeframe and when we could. Like oftentimes it's based off the volume that's booking in golf now.
I'm just saying in the fee schedule, can you write based on season, like in parentheses? Yeah, like a foot, no. Just, I mean, unless I'm the only stupid one who didn't know why, but I, I'm assuming I'm maybe not the only one.
No, we can definitely clarify that.
Okay. And then my other question for you is, um, and that, this second one is not you, it's Jamie. Um, Jamie, in the, um, the scheduled, where is it? The unscheduled collection fee, I remember us talking about it being a first, a second and a third, right? Um, within the, within, I think it was the fiscal year, I believe, is how we talked about it. Um, and the old says 100 to 500 and the new says 300. So where's the first, second, third? It says removing first, second and third, if you look under the notes.
Look at the notes.
So it's just a flat right now.
Yes, it's a flat 300. Instead of doing the, the one, the, the, the three step that we talked about. Um, if you recall that conversation, we went to a flat, so it's the same amount. Plus the cost of removal.
Okay, so, all right.
And that was, I think, the confusion before because people thought that was just the total cost. But it still costs us tipping fees when we take whatever we're taking to the transfer station. So it's the cost of the citation plus the actual cost of the removal.
Plus the cost of removal. So instead of having the 100, 200, 500, we are just saying 300, no matter what.
Makes it a lot easier from our side in record keeping. So our techs out field, they'll always call back to the office and hey, this address, what have they had before? Well, it just makes it a lot easier.
That makes sense. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Mr. McBoy.
Um, I just was looking for a clarification since we're looking at the fee schedule. Uh, and I think this would come from City Manager Brown. Uh, if for mobile home parks, trailer, whatever, mobile home parks, I guess is the correct name. Um, if the cost of garbage collection that we charge the whole park is divided by the number of residents, does the cost in our fee schedule correspond to the same cost as a residential, normal residential home, or is it different?
Uh, so it actually falls in between, uh, what a residential would be and what a commercial rate would be?
So it's higher?
Correct.
So we are currently charging mobile home parks, which are largely seniors and low income, we're charging them more than a residential. Do we pick up recycling and bulk waste from them?
Some locations, some do not want to recycle. That has, that program has been offered.
So we are providing less service than we provide to regular residences and we're charging them more to a part of the community that probably can least afford the extra charge.
Well, I, I think the main difference is when you look at the Palm Beach County Property Appraiser, um, if you look at each one of our, uh, mobile home sites, they are one large, basically a commercial property. They're not individual, each lot is not its own individual property. So we, just like we do with any commercial property, charge the actual property owner. And then it's up to them how they want to disperse that fee among all of the people.
Right, but we, we actually have several math savvy members of the commission who can do the calculation of dividing our total bill that we send them by the number of residents and figure out that we as a commission, in fact, are charging that community more per, for less service.
Yes, so, uh, during the budget process, I had broken out that table. It showed each park and you have the different options, whether it was a, charges a residential property, a commercial property, and you have that in between, which is basically our standalone mobile home park rate, because not residential, not really commercial, it's kind of its own, but, so.
And if we charge lower, just let me chime in, there's no guarantee that the owner of the mobile home park would, would, would not charge, they can charge whatever they want.
If, if I might respond, that argument was made before and it's specious. It is a ridiculous argument. Of course, you know that the mobile home park at best can pass it straight through. They could add more to it. That's out of our control, but you know that if we are charging them more per residence there than we are charging residents, you know that the mobile home park isn't going to subsidize the difference and say, well, we're charging our senior citizens more than residents in the rest of Lake Worth. Why don't we subsidize that as a mobile home park owner? You know that they're not doing that. So saying that we don't know what the mobile home park, the only way the mobile home park can go is add more to the cost and make that differential even more unfair to that community.
But what, I guess what I would say to that is, is we're, we're not sure. Um, there could be an administrative fee they tack on top of whatever the city.
Exactly. It could go up.
Could be nothing. I'm, I'm not sure.
And if it's nothing, then we know what we have charged, which is more than residential's and for less service to a, as I say, a community that probably can least afford it.
And I, I, I apologize if my argument was specious.
It was.
Um, okay, thank you. Mr. Segret, your line is on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the fee for parking in Lou, it says we're going from 0 to 25,000. Is that just because we moved it out of the code into the fee table and increased it? Cause I believe it was 20,000 within the code. Is that correct?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Commission, Monica McNaughton, Assistant Finance Director Budget. That fee was.
Talk a little bit louder.
That fee was inadvertently removed and we put it back. So we apologize, the page, the page was removed from the schedule of fees. And when it was brought to our attention, we put that back in there. So it's not that it was, it's not that it's going up, it was removed and we added it back to make sure we have it, we're charging it. Yes.
Um, so the, the next set of fees. Um, so the the next set of fees under use permits, we are reestablishing fees for our administrative and conditional use permits?
Those are all fees that were, yes, that's all part of the pa, there was a whole page that was missing. We're adding that page back in there.
Okay. Um, I would, you know, in in reviewing that, I would like to bring up one item. Um, and just as an example for clarity, uh, I'll bring up the Park of Commerce, which is zoned for warehouse and distribution. However, the use of warehouse and distribution is a conditional use there. And I think we do need to examine our code where it has uh a lot of administrative and conditional uses that actually should be used by right. So, you know, if the zoning is warehouse and distribution, if the Park of Commerce was created for such uses, why is it a conditional use in in that area? So I would just like to get consensus for a future meeting to have a discussion of reducing some of the conditional administrative uses where possible, um, to make it more business friendly, to to bring more people in.
I, does anyone, that's a zoning thing, it's really not a fee schedule. Um. So. Means, in terms of the fee schedule, do you have a problem with pre-schedule or the zoning?
Uh, I I don't have a problem with the schedule, but I would like consensus to have a discussion on reducing the number of conditional and administrative approval uses within our code.
But do you understand what the conditional use thing is for? Why they do it?
I do, I I I asked for consensus, Madam Mayor.
Anyone want to? Any other consensus agreement?
No, this is at a future date.
Right, and and that's what you're asking, and I, I'm not up for that. I don't know if anybody else is. Mr. McBoy? No, Miss.
And I don't think, I think if somebody wants to talk about something, we should talk about it. If I wanted to talk about something, I would hope you guys would allow that.
Please remember that when I bring some things up.
But I'm sorry, let me refrain. We want to talk about something that has to do with the city of Lake Worth Beach.
Well, let's.
Please remember that.
Don't have a discussion like this, I'm not gonna, don't make me be the mom, um, one at a time, please, and I'll call on you. Um. I, uh, you know, we can discuss everything for the rest of our lives and like it. So, I mean, I wouldn't, I think there are conditional purposes, reasons, there are reasons for it, conditions are important and if somebody comes to the, to the P and Z board, it might be a good use, but there are conditions that I think we're taking away the power of the P and Z board by doing. I think that, I just think that, my feeling is conditional uses are, have a function, so that's how I feel. So, where are we at? Is there a consensus to talk about that at some point?
Can I just ask you? Can you bring this forward at a pre-agenda meeting, so I have time to reach out to William and have a conversation before I support the conversation?
Yes, I'll withdraw. I'll I'll withdraw.
Yeah, a lot of stuff happens at meetings, we have, you know, a lot.
So in terms of. It's not, I know, it's just I want to have a conversation with Stafford.
Um, so where are we at with this fee schedule? Are there any public comments? Motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Public hearings, okay, I want to make a um, a comment about the public hearing that's coming up. This is the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen. I'm going to ask the city attorney to read it, but before we take any action on it, I'm going to be looking for a very specific vote. So please read by title.
Thank you. So this is the procedural hearing, it is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen. An ordinance of the city of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, amending the city's official zoning map to provide a zoning district of single-family and two-family residential asset. Yeah, working on the property at eight twenty-six Sunset Drive, generally located at the south end of Sunset Drive. Then more particularly described in exhibit A, providing self-ability conflicts and an effective.
Thank you very much. There has been a huge amount of public comment on this one. I'd see a lot of folks around here tonight. Miss Malaga?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to take um privileges, you say, Madam Mayor. Being that this isn't my district, I would like to postpone this item until June sixth. January sixth, sounds good though.
Mister, um. Attorney, uh. Is that date certain, something that, I mean, I'm looking for your advice, is that the date certain that we're looking for?
January sixth, twenty twenty-six would be a date certain that this could be continued to. There would not need to be additional advertising or anything. This is the public notice that this item will be continued to January sixth.
Thank you. Mr. Segway, your light's on?
I second that.
I already did.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, your friendly neighborhood city clerk here.
Yeah.
My suggestion, because this item will take anywhere from three to five hours. Glenn, is there a way to continue it to a special meeting that we haven't set a date for yet?
In June?
I I think, I I.
Wait, did you say, did, you didn't mean June, you meant January.
It's a joke. Everybody says.
Since we need to continue it to a date certain and that is a date certain, uh, maybe we could try to keep that agenda light otherwise.
Um, or could we look now for a date to set a special meeting?
Could, or you could do a special meeting for everything else, since you have this date now.
Okay.
It might be a little difficult getting everybody's calendars coordinated in the next few minutes.
So we're not going to have anything on the agenda but this item on the sixth of January?
Or you could direct say to have it early light, other than.
What's our first meeting of the year coming back? I'm concerned about that. So could we do the Monday or the Wednesday before, after, the fifth or the seventh? Is that time, is that?
Pardon me, but Wednesdays of the first, William Waters can use as the new director. At the first Wednesday of the month is BZB, the second Wednesday is HHP, and the third Wednesday is normally going to be a joint meeting between the two.
Okay, so January fifth would be the day before?
No, that's, oh, January.
That's a Monday.
Madam Mayor?
Wait, wait, there's a little discussion going on between.
I was trying to get the exact date, you said the second reading has to happen by February's uh second.
Right.
So, could we do it on a Tuesday, thirteen?
No, that's.
Madam Mayor, I've just looked at everybody's calendars.
Yeah.
And the only thing on January fifth is um College Park Neighborhood Association, everybody else is clear.
Okay.
Tropical Rich Neighborhood Association.
Oh, Tropical Rich, yes.
On January fifth? Mr. Mc. When are you coming back? When are you coming back?
I'm sorry.
Mr. McBoy's not available on the fifth, when are you back?
What about the eighth?
Hang on, wait, did you zoom it on the fifth?
Probably June, maybe.
I can be here. Mr. Segway? So, Mr. McBoy, because we're really going to get this going.
I mean, if we have.
So, yeah, we have a forum, and Mr. Mr. McBoy can appear by Zoom. So on the fifth, like, can we do the special meeting? This special meeting for this agenda item on the fifth of January?
At six P M?
At six P M.
You could, if that's a date certain that you want to move it to, you can do that.
I think that's the best situation.
I think so, I think, because the next day we'll have another, we'll have our regular meeting then, because we have a lot. I'm saying, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to amend my motion to postpone public hearing eight until January, not June, January fifth at six P M.
And that, I will second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Folks, see you on the fifth. And if, you know, if you want to have one spokesperson, you know, or two or three spokespeople, I know this crowd, that's why I'm saying it. I'll take a quick break while these folks are here. We're going to take a little comfort break so that people can go back home and we get to stay. We'll be back.
It is seven twenty and we have reconvened.
Scared me.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. And I don't scare that easy. Okay, up next is unfinished business, a park ranger program. We have something from Stan?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Stu Sword, Leisure Services. This is a follow up to unfinished business, the park rangers, the staff, leisure services, also human resources, community sustainability. We've put a significant amount of energy and work hours into assessing other municipalities at the local level. We also consulted with the state and federal park ranger services, and more specifically spent time on the ground with the Boca Raton Park Rangers. They were the most welcome and inviting, so we spent some time on the ground there to observe what they use and best practices that work. This is our report, the slide that's being displayed is essentially the framework that I will talk us through. So again, this is a cold start program. We don't currently have a program of record and we're building this from inception. This document here that I call the framework document pretty much outlines the tentative framework all open for discussion on the park ranger program. We have drafted job descriptions, tentative job descriptions for the park ranger manager. I think key to the first forty five days is the hiring of that manager and that manager's on board with their knowledge, skills, experience to make recommendations as we hire the other staff. So I do say that because it is kind of a cold start, also meaning a slow start. The approach that we're using is a persistent presence in four of our parks. The park rangers initially would serve as a park ambassador, an educator, a goodwill ambassador, but also have the ability to enforce code and citations. Those could begin with a warning and then escalate to a citation. Code compliance has helped us develop an initial draft of what that citation book would look like. I would recommend the park ranger manager be on board and use his or her experience and make some recommendation. There are quite a few chapters of code that we currently do not place a lot of energy on, most specifically seven and twenty one being beach parks, recreation, and then traffic. The park rangers would have to go through for association of code enforcement training, which is sometimes like a slot allocation. So if we wanted to get someone in next week, that may not happen. So initially, as the park ranger manager would come on board, they would spend a fair amount of time hiring staff, procurement of mountain bikes, uniform standards, a lot of administrative bookkeeping requirements initially in the first forty five days. Some ordinances in the citation book that we've identified with code compliance helped us, chapters five, which is alcohol, chapter six, animals and fawns, chapter seven, specific to beach parks and recreation, and chapter twenty one, traffic. A lot of those have some very interesting ordinances in there that would be beneficial to pay some energy on. The initial locations for these are selected Bryant Park, the beachfront area, Sunset Ridge, and Howard Park. The reason those were selected is because they kind of geographically represent, you know, the four quadrants of Lake Worth Beach. We selected those based off the volume. Now, we could shift around, that would put park rangers, once it's established, and we do have the staff of six in approximately thirty five to thirty acres of our parks, open spaces of the thirty two that we have. The initial costing for all of this was generated, so this costing was generated based off going active with the program on October first, comes in at four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That does include the benefits and how they're calculated at a percentage, and we did calculate that at the highest pay range, just to be high on our initial cost estimates, leaving a residual balance out of the earmarked five hundred thousand dollars of eighty one thousand dollars. I would mention every day that this is not a record, we are essentially recouping about a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars, so that residual balance will be higher than eighty one thousand dollars, at least for the initial year. That allows us to reassess at the hundred and eighty day mark, tentatively looking at a kickoff around the hundred and twenty day mark from the time we receive the green light and begin to execute. But we do have to push the jobs, go through the selection process, go through the vetting process, and oftentimes that can take sixty days. What does a conceptual park ranger day look like? Rangers are professionally uniformed on mountain bikes. We did have a discussion if it's a wheeled platform or a mountain bike. We thought initially we'll go with mountain bikes just to kind of keep the cost low, purchasing four mountain bikes for the six park rangers. Obviously, they're using rotating shifts, so four bikes, we could assess the quality of the bike, you know, the saddlebags in the correct placement, and with lights and saddlebags. They carry numerous outreach material documents supporting upcoming events, the history of the Lucerne Township, the history of our parks, flora and fauna, and also information on the hot team, the homeless outreach team, and perhaps clinical social work outreach contacts and programs of record that could assist some of the tenants of our parks. Any questions? Those are my opening comments.
So they'll be, so they'll be resource, they'll be able to help with resources this way?
Correct.
Yeah, I think, you know, this is a new program. I think we're all trying to get our heads around what this is going to look like. So thank you for your opening, Mr. Mc Boyd. We have a lot of lights on, Mr. Mc Boyd, you go first.
No, I'm.
Oh, who's first? Ms. Malaga? Where were you?
I was over there.
Second or? Oh, that's, that's me. Okay, Ms. Malaga.
Does Jane, you want to say something? Okay. First, I want to say thank you to staff and to city manager's office for all the time and energy you've put into researching this. Thank you to the commission for supporting this idea when I brought it forward. I do have a couple of questions. When I read through the job description, the first question I have is, it's kind of related, but not. Do we have an open, our open space master plan, where are we with that? Because I think that that would have some correlation with park rangers. I also didn't see in what you just read off, also didn't, I didn't hear use permits. So one of the problems that we have at Howard Park is people using Howard Park on the weekends and having parties of upwards of hundred and fifty people with DJs and coot trucks, and they didn't pull a permit. So I would like to see that that is something that are the park rangers could either verify, write citations for people who are having events, or kick them out, call PBSO, do whatever. I don't know what five, six, and seven, those codes are. I'm assuming they have, there's something to do with open alcohol, smoking in parks, the ordinances that we've passed, drugs. But I just want to say thank you. I know that this is a brand new program and you took this head on, so thank you. I'm excited to see where this goes, and I think that we're, I think that a lot of the residents are excited about this. I did have a meeting today with PBSO, myself and Mr. Perry, and I was, I asked if I could share this information. Five, I'm sorry, since January first until the end of October, fifty three thousand four hundred calls for service.
From?
For PBSO. Fifty three thousand four hundred calls for service from January first till October.
For the parks?
No, for our city. Okay, so when I say that we need park rangers, PBSO is busy doing the things that they need to do. And when I saw these numbers, I literally said, well, when would you have time to patrol the parks or patrol the beach? It was mind numbing, the numbers that we went over in regards to trespassing, real serious crimes and some of the stuff that we're dealing with in District One right now. So PBSO is, they're out there doing the work and they're doing the hard work. I now see the numbers and know why they're not at the park writing tickets for open alcohol containers for people smoking in the park. So I just, I support this a hundred percent, and I thank you all for indulging in this conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Mc Boyd.
I think some of the others were.
You're next. You're next.
I'm up. I live opposite Sunset Ridge Park. I hear sounds from Sunset Ridge Park on a regular basis. I hear kids, maybe young adults, playing basketball. They socialize there. I hear and see pickleball. I don't know if I hear tennis, but I certainly see it. That park is actively used a lot. There are people there. I think folks who have experience in security and law enforcement will tell you, one of the scariest things for safety is to go, say, downtown Chicago after five o'clock because it empties out, because it's generally single use. It's office area, doesn't have a lot of residential. I just think of Chicago as I'm a little bit familiar with it. If you have regular use, a lot of people using a park, they tend to be very safe. We have, I've lived twenty years opposite Sunset Ridge Park, and I've talked to folks who've lived there even longer, and they'll tell you that, yeah, every now and then get a little bit of pankey, pankey happening in the parking lot and a few cars coming up, and you do a couple of calls to PBSO, they show up a little bit more frequently and it goes away again. Might occasionally get similar, there might be some drug sales. Occasionally, you call PBSO, they start coming a little more often, and it goes away again. The park is well-used, it's safe, it's, it's just nothing. Bryant, I go with people who are older than I am, women, eighties, late seventies, and we do yoga there. We are there for two hours, come coming and going. We see a lot. We're supposed to keep our eyes closed doing yoga, but when you're in Bryant Park, it's such a cool place to be. You look at the water, you look at, you look at the people going by. It is totally safe. It, it, there's a lot of activity, there are people coming through. It's not, right now, it's not used that much, but it, there's, there's plenty of people going through it, single women walking their dogs, single women biking through it, walking through it. If it was that big a safety concern, I don't think those people would feel safe there. One of the most interesting concepts I learned hanging around resource economics in graduate school was the concept that I'd never heard of before, opportunity cost. When you spend money on one thing, you can't spend it on something else. Four hundred, over four hundred thousand dollars in a city that doesn't have a big budget, that is frequently saying, we don't have enough money to do this, we don't have enough money to support staff, to provide a community space, to do something where they'll, oh, they'd be there in the evening, we can't afford that. Four hundred thousand dollars to do things that overlap with what the grounds crew do, what PBSO does. I do occasionally see PBSO coming through. I see grounds crew, or, and I don't know whether they're grounds or public works or which part of the city, but I see city employees come through. A little bit of presence is plenty. Four hundred thousand dollars that we don't really have extra makes no sense to me. The idea of that people wandering in the park are dying of curiosity to get directions to how to get from Sunset Ridge Park to Bryant Park, or from Bryant Park to Howard Park. Dudes, we have phones nowadays. It's an amazing thing. You can look up most anything and get from here to there. We don't need folks wandering around giving directions. These folks are park rangers. I don't think we're going to get people who have a lot of native, native habitat knowledge, and there aren't any native habitats in our parks. It is a big grass lawn, very nicely cut, by the way. It's always perfect. There are dogs. I see dogs loose there. I see dogs on leashes, but I see dogs loose. You would think if we're doing yoga there, we might be a little worried that you don't really want to put your mat in dog doo-doo. It's never happened. We've never seen it. People are very good about picking up. I've never seen fights between the dogs. The people who let their dogs off have sort of figured out, yeah, my dog works out okay. If my dog doesn't work out, I bring them on a leash. We are turning into a militarized sort of an idea of parks that we do not need and we certainly don't have the money to spend for it. So. And, you know. I'm just not in the least bit convinced that this is a wise expenditure. I'm also not the least bit convinced that if you went and actually talked to people who are in the parks, who are using them, and talked to a fair number of them, would they say, oh, you know, I really need a park ranger to be able to bike through the park, or I really need a park ranger to sit in a chair here and read my book. And I think there are real legal issues that we have to think about. If somebody's a park ranger and they're enforcing who is in the park, and I bring my book, and I bring a mat or a towel or whatever, and I just, you know what, this book is not quite as interesting as I thought. I think I'll take a little nap in the sun here. Am I sleeping in the park? What if I neglected to shave for the last two days because I got tired of shaving? And I look a little rugged. Maybe I forgot to change my clothes and my wife didn't catch me before I went out the door. And I look a little different. Am I going to get picked up? How are you going to tell who is desirable, who is not desirable? Are you going to be exposing the city to lawsuits? It is not illegal to take a little nap after you're reading your book. It's not illegal to sit at a bench in a. It is not illegal to take a little nap after you're reading your book. It's not illegal to sit at a bench in a pavilion. And you want people to use the parks. You don't want people to have. I'm a definite no on, on, A, on, I don't think it's needed. I don't think it's much value added. I looked, I asked a lot of specific questions. And I looked at the answers and I'm not seeing either realistic things or things that are particularly needed. And I think there's a comment that, that has to be made. There will always be people in any community who will feel unsafe somewhere in the community. There will always be. You will never get to a hundred percent. Everybody says, oh, I feel totally safe everywhere. It's not a realistic objective. You could have eighteen park rangers, have them all armed and there's still going to be people who say, you know what, I saw something and I didn't feel safe there. You can't fix that problem. So you have to look at it statistically probabilistically and talk to a bunch of people who use it and say, are you nervous? Are you worried about it? And I think you're going to find if we did that honestly, you would find that there are plenty of people who use the park who are perfectly comfortable, parks, who are perfectly comfortable with it. Do we want people patrolling the beach? And if you decide that you're going to lean back and sleep in the sun, now you're sleeping in a public park and we're going to prosecute for you, prosecute for you, you for it. And based on what you look like or what you don't look like. I, I think we are exposing ourselves, we're potentially setting ourselves up for legal issues and we're not solving a real problem and it's costing, potentially costing a huge amount of money. And most of it is either already being done by existing staff or could with a little bit of restructuring, hey, can you pop in and check this, check that?
Definitely no.
Thank you, Mr. May, Ms. May.
My dad's here. Hi dad, from heaven. Um, okay, thank you for, uh, um, I, just a couple of questions, sir. The bikes, so mountain bikes make sense, but my, so right now there's four parks. And I've gotten feedback from, um, I went to the NAPC meeting and I got feedback and people that live in other neighborhoods that have parks are, you know, why, why not us? And, um, you know, I'm specifically thinking about Tropical Ridge Park, Royal Point Sienna, the spillway, and specifically the Cultural Plaza, which I can, I consider a park. So I understand that it's a pilot and we pick, you pick the four certain parks and, you know, if we're hearing sunset's perfect, so maybe we don't need to go there. But we have, if we did electric bikes, then when we spread out and say you could go to all these other parks, it may make it easier on the park rangers. I, I mean, I'm not a bike expert, but I'm just thinking like, if I was in Bryant Park and I had to go up to Spillway Park for my half an hour shift there, I could zoom over there, you know, and the city, I mean, it really is going from here, we, we measured it and we looked at it, going from here to Spillway Park is two point four miles. And then we're going down to Eighteenth Avenue, which is, um, less than two miles. So, um, it's only, you know, a seven square mi, or seven by seven square mile city. So if we could give the possibility for in the future to go to some other parks, be, another thing is if we know that there, if I were trying to do criminal intent, I would not go to those four parks anymore. I'd find a new park. Um, so I do think we need to consider, consider those options. Um, the other question. Oh, okay. Um, one of the residents brought up on Sunday or Saturday at the NAPC meeting was that the hours you have here is eight to ten. And that, um, the, some of the issues that they find is, um, pre-dawn dawn. And that's the time when people are kind of waking up and, you know, situations may occur. That's when people are going to see the sunrise and, um, I, I don't, I don't know the answers to this, so I'm just giving you the questions that people asked me. Somebody else asked, could they, and I'm assuming since they're code officers, they could. But when they're giving a citation, do they have the legal, uh, authority to ask for ID?
I couldn't answer that at the current moment.
So we did talk to the, uh, no, it wasn't, Troy's not in here. Troy and I called and I think, I think they do as code officers. But, um, we want to double check that because if they can't even ask for somebody's ID, that's kind of moot. Because how do you cite them? The, let's see. I'm trying to remember what else they said. I think those are my questions for now. Um, I do, I do see a need for this. I do hear from the community when I ran, I ran with this as one of my, um, one of my platform points. So, um, I'm really happy to see this coming forward and, um, I think that it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily that, you know, everybody feels unsafe. But we want it to be, I, I would like to be able to go to the park and if I had small children, I would want them to be able to go play on the, on the playground. And, um, I'm hearing from moms that that's not, they're not comfortable doing that. So, um, you know, I think everybody has their own experience and they, everybody has their own tolerance level of comfortability in public places. So, you know, I think for me or anyone else to say how someone else feels is kind of not really fair. You know what I mean? We all have our own level of comfort. So I'm, I'm excited about this. I'm excited to hear more about it. Um, but I really do think we want to look forward on making it so that they can go to all the parks. And because I mean, to the point, driving around Bryant Park for eight hours could get a little boring. You know, when we could go down, they could go down to South Palm Park and then they could cut over, you know, and do the, do the route, you know, and maybe not a predictable manner. But, um, yeah, that's what's on my mind with this.
Thank you, Mr. Segrich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for putting this together. I know a lot of hard work went into it. So you say, you, you spent a, a good amount of time with Groton, um, and the park rangers there. Um, did they have any success, you know, examples to share in terms of reduction of crime, improvement of the parks? What were some of those things that they shared with you?
They, in, in terms of reduction measures, so they like to use essentially like a, a escalation, if you will. Initially, as a goodwill ambassador, they approach, you know, said person in violation of, of code ordinance and issue a warning. Hey, are you aware this is a violation? And hopefully they receive the warning and, and, and move out and continue with their day. Uh, if the conduct continues or becomes more abrasive or unresponsive, then they issue the simple citation. So it's, it's been like wildly successful. I know most of us are familiar with Boca Raton and, uh, their feedback is wildly successful.
Okay. So I mean, that's, it's very, very encouraging to, to hear. Sorry, I, I would tend to agree with Commissioner May that, that e-bikes would, would make more sense. I mean, uh, and eat the difference between an e-bike and a high quality mountain bike in terms of price. I mean, they, they get kind of close. Um, I would be concerned with rain. You know, we do get a lot of rain here in, in South Florida and, and if our, um, rangers are constricted to bikes, what, what happens in the rainy season? Um, are they rotting around in the rain or, you know, so I, I don't know if we can avoid some sort of ATV vehicle, a side by side or, or, or something. And I know that's a larger expense. But I think we do have to consider, you know, the, the rainy season and of course, less people are going to be in the parks during the rainy, you know, while, while it's raining and, and so on, but um, either a station somewhere for them to go or some other way for the rainy time to, to be useful and pro, productive because we do get a lot of that. You know, in, in terms of some of the things going on in our parks, um, and I, I won't belabor the point too much, but you know, just this morning, the, the city manager and I were, were having a discussion of reports of a naked person swimming and bathing and washing their clothes in the lagoon in Bryant Park in front of children and families and, and so on. And, you know, um, I think the city manager was a little bit shocked to learn that this is actually a regular occurrence. It's, it's an everyday occurrence, right? And so, you know, there's that. Um, I personally walk through Bryant Park quite often and we find needles weekly. Um, when we did our beach cleanup, one of the buckets came back with well over fifty nips and needles in it. Um, from, from our lovely beach. Uh, the little alcohol shots. Um, you know, and, and, and we see a, a lot of these, um, small and minor behaviors that, that lead to more major things. And, and I think in terms of destruction of property at our parks, you know, we recently approved, uh, almost maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the repairs to a, a bathroom that maybe we wouldn't have to, um, if, if we had this. So I think in principle, um, this is a, a, a good idea and a good step forward for us. I think limiting it to the four parks, um, might be a little too restrictive if they, if they are more mobile. Um, you know, i- if Sunset Ridge is perfect, then maybe it doesn't need as much patrol. But I do know, um, Tropical Ridge. Over the weekend, I received fifteen separate different complaints, pictures of people smoking crack right on the swing sets or, or the seesaw, whatever's there, um, dealing drugs from there, from a car, carrying cash from the car to the park and so on. Um, unfortunately PBSO responded quickly and increased patrols in those areas. But the resident who reported it was scared to go on record, scared to walk up with their, their, their phone and, 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 and do that. And I, I think a regular presence, a uniform presence, um, holds some weight. Um, and it, it takes some of the burden off of our citizenry for having to maintain these assets, um, that we have. And I think it also, you know, will help PBSO. It's hard to get a resident to make a report of, of these, uh, behaviors. A lot of times they'll text me and I have to go make a report and, and so on. It's even harder to get them to stick around and, and wait for PBSO because as Commissioner Malaga brought up, fifty three thousand four hundred calls for service, they are busy. And it may take them two minutes to respond. It may take them twenty five minutes to respond to some of these things. And having a, a ranger who is responsible to, you know, be there and, and serve as that witness, um, I think will actually help, um, us get, um, a little bit more out of, um, our PBSO presence there. Um, so I'm in favor of, of this program. Um, I also want to echo the concerns about the early morning. Um, you know, we do a lot of, uh, pre-sunset walks to, to go to the beach to watch the sunrise and there's a lot you see, um, at, at that time of day. Lunchtime seems to be a little bit less. It's kind of high noon and people go and take a siesta and, and they're not out and about moving around, but um, dawn and dusk seem to be, um, the source of a lot of some of the illicit activities. And I don't know how we necessarily cover, cover that. Um, I recognize that this is a cold start program and there's a lot to discuss, um, uh, about that. So I'm kind of leaving my comments general, but overall supportive of these concepts. And I think there's a lot in here that's going to have, um, a lot of benefit. Um, and I'm also very eager to hear if we have any public comment and, and on, on this, you know, um, and, and hear what the citizens have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to mind a little two cents. I, I also agree with limiting it to the four. Um, you know, we have smaller parks, you know, the Tropical Ridge right here and I know, I know South Palm Park, I've heard reports from South Palm Park. Um, so I think if we can figure it out, and this is a pilot, you know, it's a pilot program, it's just getting started. And I think it hopefully, I'm, I'm assuming, be careful about that. Then we will review how things, you know, because it is a new program, like every month or two, you know, what's going on with the parks. And I think that, you know, one of the things that, you know, sometimes we do things that we can't put our finger on, that it's not a measurable result. But I think that from, and I've been here for a long time and I get a lot of comments, um, about the park from people that spend a lot of time in the park, especially Bryant Park, but others as well, that there's, there's a perception of whether it's unsafe or unsavory, or just they want some eyes and ears on a situation are very helpful. And visibility, the fact that people will then see that the, the city is taking, paying attention and taking note of what's going on in the parks, I think is, is a, a good thing to do. Um, we lose, you know, dogs walking in the park, you know, it's, I have friends that let their dogs loose in Bryant Park and, um, I love my dogs, but I also know that other dogs have been attacked by dogs and I know that people are afraid of dogs. I was walking with a friend who had, was trying to teach a six-year-old girl how to ride a bike and everything was great. We were on the path, you know, and all of a sudden we looked up and not too far away was a large dog on, on a leash. And I said to the guy, you gotta put the dog, I was called a Karen. You gotta put the dog on, but my name's Betty. Um, you know, you gotta, you can't do this. I'm training my dog. Leave me alone, Karen. Okay. I said, I'm really not a Karen. I really let a lot more go than a lot of other people would, but you don't know that. Um, so I think I, I think it's a good idea. I, I do support the idea. I do think that, I think the electric bike idea is, is a good idea. I think that going to the different parks is a good idea. I, uh, the early mornings problem is that's when people are sort of rising up. But, and I, but I also do, there's part of what Mr. McFoy is, you know, I mean, parks are for use of the people. Parks are for use by the people during the day, not at night. And there will be, I would assume if we hire quality people, they will be able to use some common sense in, in, as they look around the park and see what's going on. And wouldn't it be nice if in a couple of months, the, the park ranger says, you know what? Things are looking up. I'm not getting as many. I got an email this morning about with the police, you know, going into Bryant Park quite a bit. It was, you know, it was going good and people are encouraged by that. Then they seemed to think it had fallen off. I don't think it has, but that was their perception. And our people, our citizens need to feel safe and cared for. And I think that this will allow them to feel like we're, listen to what they're saying. It's not everybody, it's not every park, but I have a nephew that lives right near Mr. Segrich and he says, Betty, Aunt Betty, beloved Aunt Betty, Aunt Karen. Um, you know, he'll see people, you know, pooping in the park and he's walking his infant daughter. I've gone to the park, I go to the park pretty regularly. I, 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 what I was like, let me find some needles. I will say that. Let me find some needles. I looked all over. I could not find one darn needle or one condom. So I guess it was a clean day. No, this was Bryant Park. Oh, go to South Palm and find, okay. So I, I, we do need to have attention paid to this. I, you know, I, I you know, I have some reservations about overreaching, you know, what Mr. McFoy was talking about, but on the whole, I think that this is a good effort. I think let's see what happens, let's talk about in six months where we're at. I, uh, so I, you know, I think we have to sort of identify what we're doing and that was one of my concerns and you've, you know, you've answered that pretty well. So, um, Mr. McFoy has his left, Madam Parker, you keep track of time?
I am, Madam Mayor. You have ten minutes, twenty-four seconds left.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to do, uh, two minutes.
Question for the attorney. Are there any restrictions in a public park? Or is there any recommended practice on asking people for ID?
Commissioner May mentioned it as well, so I'll look into that.
I, I have a really, really, I mean, people are talking here about, you know, people need to feel safe. It's probably a very small percentage of the people who use these parks who don't feel safe and who you could have an army out there and they still wouldn't feel safe. The vast majority do. But there's another side, the people who currently use it and feel fine. And just like the mayor and myself, I have never seen a needle in Bryant Park and I'm there a lot. And I'm on a bicycle, so I don't really want needles in my tires. So I'm going to pay attention to that. And I've never seen one. I've never seen a condom either. Now, maybe I haven't looked in the right places. I don't necessarily go looking under bushes to see if there are any. But I have a lot of questions. Is it legal? But my bigger question is, how do you want the people who use the park who don't have a problem feeling unsafe? How are they going to feel as they suddenly are accosted and asked for their ID? Or they see somebody else who is asked for their ID and they're not, and they are a different color or a different background, and we are then subject to lawsuits. I think that's a big concern. So asking for ID, I have a big question for that. I know, and I've raised this before, Bryant Park near the band show, there is a regular meeting. I don't know the exact schedule. I'm told that it, I think I was told that it might even be daily, that Narcotics Anonymous meets in that area. I think a group of folks who are meeting to support each other, trying to get out of narcotics addiction are doing a very good thing. And we should encourage that. And if those people need to step aside and take a little smoke of a cigarette, a legal thing, I'd say cut them some slack and say, in the greater good, you have people that I've never seen anybody around that group feels uncomfortable that the NA folks are hanging out and trying to support each other. I don't have any connection to that community particularly, but I have gone and talked to them, asked them, and I've mentioned, hey, you know, when you leave, pick up your cigarette butts just to keep relations with the rest of the park. But we have a smoking thing. You can't do that here.
Right. Madam Mayor, that's two minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McFoy.
A little slack.
I don't think there's anything in here that says that there, because I know them, and there's a Mr. Mr. McFoy. You know, I can you address that?
Yeah, in in regards to to that meeting, I I frequently see that. We were down there twice this week doing train walks, rehearsals for upcoming events. And in in both times, there were rather large gatherings, I say large north of twenty-five people in that meeting. Now, is it a noble cause? I'm neither here nor there to justify that. But it was a large gathering of a lot of things, and and many of those things could be perhaps violations of city ordinances. We are, we do have a draft ordinance that is a revision, I believe it's seven dash nine. I believe I could miss misspeak that with the city manager's office, the city attorney. And I believe that's going to be coming forward very soon, kind of building out what a special event is. Is it permitted? Is it not? Is there an insurance requirement for that? And it's very detailed. It went from about five lines to about three pages.
And I'm very concerned.
Thank you.
We are making it harder and harder.
You don't have the floor, Mr. McFoy, with respect, you don't have the floor. Who was next? Sarah?
Are you hanging out with Director Waters, turning things from three lines to five pages?
Yeah, really, don't.
No harm, no foul, Mr. Waters. I'd like to make a motion to support this endeavor and can let staff continue to bring this forward and find someone to be the right director. I know that you said there's already people who are very interested in this position within our city. So I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Segrich, this made you want to further, do you both want to further?
No, I'll save my comments for another day.
Okay, Mr. Segrich?
Just just really quick, just one other thing I I forgot to 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 mention. There is a a good juxtaposition of whether PBSO is helping us with these kind of efforts versus a park ranger. I am sensitive to to Mr. McBoy's comments that some people might find the presence to be intrusive. But what would be more intrusive to an individual, a a park ranger who is there to give, you know, help people out, lend the advice, give a note that the people in the park, hey, how you doing? Great times. Or an officer coming up to them and and saying, hey, cut out the smoking or we're we're gonna give you a ticket. And I think a park ranger is a much less intrusive and intimidating ver- version of that. And yeah, yeah, but but also, you know, as things go well, you know, the need for them will diminish, but that's only because they're there. And that role becomes a much more inviting and and helpful role. So, you know, we did have the option of choosing between PBSO and this option of 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 park ranger. And this particular option happens to be a lot more economical by an order of magnitude of two to three times. And I think it is a lot less intrusive to our parkgoers than having PBSO do that. As well as as I can't underscore it enough, as Commissioner Malaga brought up, fifty-three thousand four hundred calls for service. And a lot of those are serious calls for service. And, you know, I feel bad when I have to report things to PBSO in our parks that I consider low priority. But to PBSO's credit, they always come. They always respond. And sometimes it's after a very major event. And then they have to get back to it. But they always respond because they do take us seriously when a citizen complaint is registered. I believe this is gonna alleviate a lot of that, let them do a lot more good. Thank you.
Thank you. And I mean, I I just did some rough math with the number that you said, it's about a hundred and eighty, about two hundred calls a day to PBSO. So and parks have rangers. I mean, I grew up in, you know, Central Park, you go to Central Park, there's people walking around. It's not, and I think in terms of asking, I don't know that we'd ever need to ask anybody's name except if we're gonna give them a citation. So, okay, so we have a motion. Yes.
Um, I do have some public comment.
Don't worry. What, ma'am?
I do have some public comment before we vote.
I have some in my hand right here. So let's start with mine here first. Joanne Gillies. She left. Oh, sunset. Oh, park ranger, Peggy Fisher. Bob and Jenny Powell.
Peggy Fisher, five oh eight North A Street. Just some information, in August, PBSO issued thirty-five trespass warnings at Bryant Park, twenty-five violation of park hours and arrests nine for trespass after warning. Couple of questions. Who's going to enforce the day docks? Is that under the park ranger? Is parking operation is going to be under the park ranger manager? Because it's sort of reads that way. The park manager, the park ranger manager shows up as being under leisure services, but the park rangers appear to be under Public Works. So there's a lot of moving parts and things that are questions. There is a problem with the fitness park and Tropical Ridge. And that's all I'll say about that. There's problems at the park over in Royal Point, Indiana. There are problems, lots of problems. And we shouldn't be looking the other way when we have a smoking ordinance to say, oh, go ahead and smoke. I'm sure that would be the same attitude we'd get if we say, oh, go ahead and and just launch your drone that you and your kid are playing with. It's just one time and then go down there and launch it again. I'm sure we'd get the same response. We have to be equitable. And if you're going to give someone a citation, you have to ask for their ID. If they refuse, you're going to have to call PBSO. And the last question I have is communication. What type of communication are these park rangers going to have between them as they are spread out throughout the city? Are they going to use radios? Or are they going to depend on city-issued cell phones? Thank you.
Thank you. Ginny Powell, followed by Danielle Hartman, followed by Ramsey, followed by Catherine Colmeyer.
Ginny Powell, two two four North Palm Way. Uh, my first question, which, okay, I'll say, all of you made some valid points. I would agree with a lot of it. But I I question, I know fifty-three thousand is a lot. My understanding is that crime is better, so it must have been really horrible before. But, you know, some years ago, we had a PBSO or two officers that were hired to monitor, I believe, both the Snook Islands Dock area and I thought Bryant Park. We also once had officers on foot patrol, horses and bicycles. I've been here a long time. We have had all those things and I guess I question why some of, we don't have some of those things now. So I question a little bit why I I haven't full disclosure, have not looked at PBSO budget. I don't know if those things are still in there. But I did think we used to have some of those. We have asked for more foot patrols in the city. So I don't know, I'm I'm not just saying in the parks, but all over. That's come up many times. And I want to thank Stuart, great job, lot of information, clearly a lot of work. And you're looking at essentially somebody, they can issue citations, which I did not realize. But somebody's, these people are going to be eyes and ears for that PBSO, especially if there's something particularly egregious. Several occasions, once through an email to Commissioner Segrich and once through to Commissioner May, when she was not yet a commissioner, Citizens Observation Patrol or some other volunteer group. I think some of these duties could be taken on by volunteer groups for the people who are most concerned. I am not. I have been in the city for over thirty years. I am over at Bryant Park in particular. I haven't had a problem. I haven't had a problem anywhere in the city. It doesn't mean there aren't some problems. But if you go to any other cities, if you travel at all, you see things. Some of them are not good. Some of them are pretty harmless.
Thank you, that's time.
A lot more.
Danielle Hartman, followed by Ramsey McLeod, followed by Ms. Colmeyer.
Good evening, Danielle Hartman, one thirty-one South Palm Way. And I'm here as the president of the Bryant Park Neighborhood Association, who during a charrette, which I do believe I remember seeing Commissioner McBoy popping in at that charrette where we had over fifty residents from both downtown Jewel and Bryant Park. And in every group that was part of that evening, over eighty percent, almost all the groups, had recommended park rangers. So the citizens and the residents of Bryant Park do support park rangers. That was part of the master plan and it's included in the master plan. I'm also the one who said, I think we need to look at the dusk hours. I'm in Bryant Park around seven AM and I walk over to the beach around seven AM and also sometimes in the evening. And that's when I don't always feel safe and I'm a pretty strong person. But there are no lights in the park. Thank God, I'm not saying I want lights. But I see people hanging out in the pavilion. I see people sleeping on the benches, walking around, and I don't always feel safe. And I'm a woman walking alone in the dark. So I take exception because I am a resident. And I also walk over to the beach and I pass people going over the bridge. There's one gentleman in particular that's always mumbling and talking to himself. I see him crossing me. He's actually said really nasty things to me. I don't even know the man. So my point is, is that I don't always feel safe. So I do agree with Commissioner Segrich that when you just have that presence and that constant presence, it is a deterrent for crime. So I'm here on as an a resident of Bryant Park, but also as the president of the Bryant Park Neighborhood Association that our neighbors include families with children who at that charrette. And I know, Mayor Resh, you heard that loud and clear from the families with the kids, that they don't always feel safe down at the park on the playground. So we strongly support the initiative and thank you for your work on this one. Thank you.
Ramsey McLeod, twenty-four South C Street. I am very concerned that the Royal Point, Indiana Playground is not included as one of the parks to be patrolled. This park has sustained numerous instances of destruction by men living in the area. Staff has spent so much money in repairing and replacing fencing that was torn apart. They've installed wooden walls in an effort to save what is left of the fencing in hopes this would curtail that behavior. And yet, the destruction continues. The Futsal Court was installed to encourage children in the area to engage in their native country sport of soccer. Instead, men have taken it over and have done everything they can to destroy it. Ultimately, unfortunately, it has gotten so bad that staff had to remove the goals that were there. So now there are concrete pieces the people put there instead. In addition, there have been many times when men in the park are drinking alcohol and they leave trash behind. We also have an issue with juveniles hanging in the park during school hours. These all seem to be legitimate violations that would warrant a closer oversight than what is being provided by PBSO. They do very little to curb this behavior or make or make the park feel safer for women in the area to bring their childrens to play, excuse me, so they can play. When they removed the camera perched across the street, the destruction got worse and did nothing to compare, to curb the drinking. Even when the park is supposed to be closed at sunset, men are still there and they can be heard kicking the ball into what is left of the walls well after ten PM. But PBSO takes no action to clear the park. Therefore, I request some provisions be made to include this park as one of the areas to be patrolled on a regular basis. And once again, here we are. This is an area west of Dixie Highway and south of Lake Avenue that is not being concluded in a citywide decision.
Well, actually, we fixed that already. So thank you. Catherine Colmeyer?
Catherine Colmeyer, five oh three First Stand yourself. I do have concerns, it's a lot of money. And I wonder if there used to be a Citizen Observation Patrol, they, citizens would train with PBSO and then go out at night. And that might be something I think would be fruitful to look into. I'm concerned with, you know, what what Ramsey explained about the park she was talking about sounds really serious. I don't know if one park ranger without a gun is going to do that much in a situation like that with men who seem threatening and aggressive and drunk. So I'm not sure. In in our society, we have people who, you know, some of them behave like that. And I I just don't know that we can solve all these situations by having yet more enforcement. I think if you had Citizen Patrol and people called PBSO when there was something threatening happening, that would be more economical. The park rangers seem to have to going, to be going to call PBSO if there is something serious happening anyway. Unless it's just a code enforcement issue. I also think, where do we draw the line? Because somebody walking across the bridge mumbling and looking a little bit dodgy, we should, what should we do with that person? Should we ban them from the public street? Should we usher them somewhere where they're not going to bother anybody? I think the whole narrative of this is a little bit concerning. We have to encompass and understand and take in some difference in our lives. And it's not going to be perfectly safe for everybody a hundred percent of the time, even though we might aim for that. So I just have some concerns. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clark?
Madam Mayor, I have two comments.
Thank you.
The first is from Tracy Ross of Peterson, three three one South Lakeside Drive. I've lived next to Bryant Park for over thirty years and during that time, I've witnessed many changes to Lake Worth Beach, Bryant Park and our city government. Improving Bryant Park has repeatedly been the focus of charrettes, listening sessions, brainstorming groups, neighborhood association meetings and PBSO discussions. One thing all stakeholders, neighbors, residents, park users and city maintenance staff agree on is that the top priority for families is safety and cleanliness. We all want a clean and safe space to walk, roll, fish, play, gather or simply relax and enjoy the breeze in this unique and special park. I trust this commission and our city staff to make thoughtful and prudent decisions, financially, socially and communally, as you consider adding park rangers to the city staff. Possibly a trial program is the way to go. And if so, I support all parks and neighborhoods receive equal access. And the second and last comment is from Nancy Udell, one one three one North Palm Way. We already pay approximately half of our budget for PBSO. Why can't they perform these duties, especially since the proposal has the park person only working during the day? The plan seems very heavy with overhead costs rather than feet on the ground. If the four hundred thousand was going all to salaries for five or six people who would be a constant presence in the parks, it might make sense. But as described, it seems very expensive, administrative-heavy and duplicative with the very expensive PBSO service we are already paying for. That's the last comment on this item.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. McBoy is the nay. Thank you very much.
I, if I might, Mayor, very quickly.
There's nothing, no, there's nothing before we have a
I just wanted to say that I heard what Ms. McLeod said, and I do agree that there are some places that do need it.
Yes, thank you. That's why we, in our discussion, discussed at the suggestion doing all the parks, not just before that are mentioned. I think that the the one by the church, Ramsey and Sarah. So, thank you very much. So, next up is discussion regarding the city commission rules of procedure. I just got this today. I had not seen this in the email, so I don't really have. Is staff gonna, what's what's? Who wants to start the discussion? I'm gonna run out for just a second and come back, but go ahead and start, Mr. Segrich. Go ahead, Mr. Segrich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This was an item that I asked consensus to to bring forth. And I was asked, at the time I brought it forth for consensus, I gave a little bit of a rough outline of what I was thinking. Since that time, I've I've had a lot more time to gather feedback and reflect. And I actually redlined the the ordinance. But for me, it it breaks down into basically six categories or six things that I that I would like us to discuss in terms of our policy. The background for this is, we have a tremendous backlog. At last count, it's well over sixty items. And we have yet to add in there, and I know staff is working on this. some of the items that staff has, has been working on to, to bring forward to the commission. Our backlog is growing. We find ourselves oftentimes reaching the eleven o'clock deadline and having to push items onto other agendas. We almost each meeting have to adjust and push things back even before that in our, in our pre-agenda. So what this is, was an attempt to look at how we do the business of the city and how can we make it a little bit more efficient, respecting staff time, but accomplishing more. So to kind of go over the different categories of some of the changes that I wanted to suggest for discussion. And to quote our mayor from one of them, you know, nothing good happens after ten PM. And we've had a lot of comments from the public. Hey, guys, it's ten PM. Everyone's pretty tired. We're trying to get through this stuff and we push through it. Basically with our meetings, we have on average about two and a half hours to do the business of the city. Because really, it's, it's about seven thirty by the time we get to some of the the major items after we get through the beginning part of our meeting. So one of my suggestions is to start our meetings earlier. I believe this would be better for staff, better for us and better for getting the business of the city done. The second was to look at modifying our agendas and how we utilize our meetings. We currently have three regularly scheduled meetings, two regular commission meetings and a utility meeting. I believe by adjusting these and moving some things around, having the regular commission meetings be more purely about the business of the city and changing the utility meeting to be a community engagement meeting and departmental meeting, we would be able to preserve a lot of the things that we want to do with the community. In fact, have more time for that as well as get more done in the regular commissions. The third item is I did give a suggested outline of what those agendas would look like for each of those meetings. Fourth was getting back to the tracking of items, actions and consensus items and motions. Troy has, has put together, you know, a simple tracking sheet that he's shared with us. But when reviewing it, it's been missing some things. And so I gave kind of my thoughts on things like dates and moving things through the process and kind of a more of a consolidated view of what is that pipeline that we're looking to get through. And the primary purpose of that is so that we can help provide priorities to staff. Because I think in a lot of cases, staff doesn't necessarily know what is our top priority or what should be coming forth. An example of that is, you know, on tonight's agenda, we're talking about July fourth items, when we have items we voted on six months ago that still haven't come back to us. So the tracking of it. The fifth section was the city manager approving items from staff to get on the agenda. As it's worded right now, any member of staff can put something on our agenda. And then the sixth and final item was, once we actually do vote on something, is giving clear timelines on when that's expected to come back. And I gave some suggestions on, on that. So those were the kind of the six categories. And basically I was hoping we could quickly look at each one and maybe get some direction or change some of these policies with the goal of getting more of the city's business done and actually working through that backlog. Because as it stands right now, the backlog's growing. We're not catching up. And that's of serious concern to me.
Thank you. I guess you want to take it one at a time. I'm gonna start out with the time, your suggested time change of four o'clock. One of, one of the, one of the things that we have, we have term limits now. And one of the things that we need are people to step forward and run for office. I have the luxury, some of us have the luxury of working for ourselves and we can have flexible time schedules. But if somebody has a nine to five job, that eliminates them from being able to run for office. So I don't think that's a good idea. And I think, and I, I've now just thought about this today. I've sat through nine years of Lake Worth Commission and lived to tell the tale. And really, nothing good happens after that. The thought of, the thought of starting something at eleven forty-five at night, I, I just cannot get behind. I believe that we've done, eleven o'clock is when we end at this point. And I just, I would not support going till whenever. I think we have to have a hard stop because I've been at meetings where it's gone to one o'clock and two o'clock. And it ju, you, it's, it gets crazy. It's not good. Your brain just doesn't work. This is after a long day of work, we come to the meeting. And so my, in terms of that particular thing, my, that's my real, I think, I think six o'clock allows people to hopefully get from work to the meeting. And I don't think that we need to go past eleven. So that's my thoughts on that particular thing. Ms. Malaga and Ms. May have their lights on?
Um, thank you. So I can-
Let's do one at a time with, yeah.
I agree in regards to the time and getting somebody to sit in the seat in the future. Because I, I think that building a bench and thinking outside of just who's sitting here is important. And I am self-employed, but self-employed people still have to work. Because if you don't work, you don't make money. So I'm not in favor of moving it to four o'clock. We already have some meetings that come up, workshops at five o'clock. And if we have to do a Saturday for certain things, we can, you know, we have that leeway. So I'm not in favor of that or, or going past eleven o'clock. I do have a question for rule, you're redlining, are we talking about that too?
That's, we're just doing the one at the time.
Just talking about the time.
We're gonna do one just at the time.
Okay, and then we'll go to the next thing and the next thing. So I'm not in favor. I mean, if we have to have a special meeting like we, we just talked about earlier, and you know, we could have said started at five PM if we think it's gonna go longer. But to me, to make that, and we want the, the public to be here. And our public in general is hardworking communities that, you know, thank God we have YouTube, thank God they can go back and watch it. I just don't think that making, they're already gonna sit here for five or six hours. Why make them get here an hour or two earlier to partake? I'm just not in favor of that. And I understand and respect your, your thought process on getting more done. I would be more inclined to support time constraints on every conversation. That's what, I think that too much BS gets talked about up here. And I think that we could really curtail that and stick to business and get through stuff a lot faster. So I hear what you're saying and I support the whole concept on time, but I think we can get there a different way.
Yeah, and I'm gonna add to that. Some of the stuff that happens at the meetings are questions for staff that could have been answered in private prior to the meeting. And sometimes I, along those same lines, I find that some of the questions that are raised by some of the commission members here in public are things that are not helpful to the morale of our staff. I think that we need to find the information ahead of time and, and don't say, well, I've got something different that blindsides the staff. And that takes up time as well. So that's just, I just want to add that. Ms. May?
I, I kind of agree with Vice Mayor Malaga because I think that the idea of starting earlier makes sense until you, I mean, I don't even get out of school until three forty-five. There's no way I'd get here by four. And, and like we said, we have to think about the future. So that doesn't really work. So I think we kind of need to keep it at six or, I mean, we can, I guess we could do five thirty. It wouldn't be the end of the world. But I think six is probably appropriate because, but we do need to get through items quicker. And I think that, you know, I've gone to other commission meetings where the item is presented and somebody makes a motion, somebody seconds it. They may have a little discussion, but it's not a half an hour. And they, they're, they're, they come prepared to vote. They're ready to, to move on. And I think, and I'm doing it right now, that we don't need a lot of conversation.
Thank you. Mr. McLeod?
Thank you. Certainly no on the four PM, keep it at six. And I will just refer to some of the things that we learned that are, were reminded of in some cases at the recent ethics meeting. One of the words that was used, no chill on public's ability or desire to attend. Four o'clock, obviously that doesn't work. Another, and, and I would agree with a hard stop at eleven. It's just, you know, that's plenty of time and we'll figure out how to get things done. I am willing to bet that I am probably the target of some of the comments about discussing things. I will read from the same-
Just, we're just, no, you don't need to. What, Mr. McLeod, let me, but not right now. We are vote, we're talking right now just about the timeframe. I mean, very clearly, just talking about the timeframe. Nothing we want to talk about again.
I have the floor, Madam Mayor.
Mr. McLeod.
Point of order.
With all due respect. Yeah, we are talking about-
I am talking-
Mr. McLeod.
Aspects. You interrupted me, not I interrupted you.
We're talking about-
Yes, we're talking about the timing. We're talking, stop.
Mr. McLeod, please listen to me for a second. Mr. Segretz, please chime in if you want to. Your suggestion is four to twelve. We've discussed that. It's, we're talking about the four to twelve or the, the, and right now we have, so you don't agree with it, Ms. Malaga doesn't agree with it. I don't, and neither does Ms. May. So-
Madam Mayor, you allowed comments on the procedure and what takes time. I would like to simply read into the record pieces from Florida sunshine law. The purpose of the Florida sunshine law, to protect the public from closed door politics. The crystallization of decisions to point just short of ceremonial acceptance, meaning that we come, we vote, nobody has any idea what the logic was behind them. That's why I ask questions of staff in public sometimes. I may already know the answer, but the public doesn't. When we have one-on-one meetings with staff, there are no records of those meetings. There is no way for the public to have any idea what went on in those. And that is not in keeping with the Florida sunshine law. The other thing they say is the how and why officials decided to act, not just the final decision. There is a reason why I ask questions and raise some things so the public can see what we are thinking, why we got to that decision.
Thank you. So in terms of eleven to four, I think we're gonna move on from that. Okay. The whole thing about delimiting time is another question that we can discuss. I don't think, right now, but, so the next one that you've got up here is the three meetings. You've explained what, what you're thinking.
I could go deeper into, I mean-
Pretty deep.
Okay.
It's pretty deep.
I was, I was just gonna say, you know, the, the essential thing was because we have these three meetings, taking the third meeting, the utility meeting, which is traditionally shorter than, than the others, where we often do finish in a very timely manner.
He's not been here long.
Comparative, relatively.
We've had some long ones.
And, and making that the community engagement and departmental meeting. And as part of that, having all of our proclamations, having all of our honors, having our commission reports or liaison reports in that one meeting as well as our departmental thing. So that's the utility stuff. Maybe we have another department that has to come in. And having our regular commission meetings be a lot more streamlined to just the business of the city. You know, I don't necessarily believe we have to give a commissioner report twice a month. I think we could do that once a month. And so I'm looking to, to kind of optimize. Since we can't start earlier, and I don't think we would be amenable to adding more meetings, we have to find a way to get through our meetings in a more efficient manner. And so under rule five, order of business, that's where I provided my sample agendas for discussion.
Thank you. Ms. Malaga?
Thank you. So I just wanna ask Commissioner Segretz, I have this piece of paper and then I have your redline and they don't match.
The redline.
Okay, so-
That, that was my initial thought from previous-
Don't need that anymore, right? Okay, so. I, I like the, I like the idea of, because I didn't want to, I've got like four of them in front of me. I like the idea of having the city commission comments on the community engagement meeting because I have found that when we go to eleven o'clock, we don't ever get to those. And not that we really need to tout what we're doing, but sometimes the community likes to know what we're doing or if there's something we need to talk about, like the NAPC is having any event. We need to get that out there. So I'm in favor of that. I personally think that we should have the city manager given updated every meeting, not just one. And I didn't see that on the order of business for the regular meeting. I think that's important to hear from our city management office at every meeting and the city attorney. Because those are the two to meet, you know, we, we can talk whenever we need to, to the, to the public. But I really, those are the orders of business and those are the two pillars that hold up city hall. So I would like to see those on, on every meeting. And if they have nothing, like the city attorney says, I have nothing today, then we move on. But at least giving them the opportunity and knowing that it's on, it's on the meeting plan. Thank you, Ms. May. Excuse me. So we have three meetings on the books. I, I hear what you're saying about the community engagement meeting. I, I understand the purpose of that. I'm wondering though, if I'm thinking about the water, the utility departments, and I'm wondering, and I, and I admit that I haven't asked them this, but maybe city manager knows the answer to this. Do you think that they would be interested in having the ability to have their items on the other two meetings?
They used to, that's what they did.
I, I know that. Do you think that that would be? My question is, why don't we just have three commission meetings? And then not make one specific? You don't have to go to any meeting.
Well, we're not, we're not-
Okay, so we have three meetings and then if the utility wants to put something on the second meeting or their first meeting, they could, they don't have to wait to, excuse me, to the end of the month. I don't know if that's something, I understand that it used to be like that. And then, then we switched it to the utility meetings. The idea I'm just behind that is to help them not have to wait as long because I know sometimes their meeting gets canceled, like in November and December. They're not, we're not gonna have those two meetings. So the other thing I was thinking about with the meetings is I do agree with Sarah that we do need to hear from the city manager and the eternity attorney at every meeting. And I don't think we need to hear from us at every meeting for an extended period of time. But I think we should be given the opportunity for two reasons. One, if there's something we want to share from being a liaison, we should have that opportunity. Two, if we want to bring something up for consensus, we only can do it during these meetings as well as the pre-agenda meeting. Therefore, I want to make sure that it's on the agenda. We don't have, you can say, I don't have a report this evening, but I think for all the meetings, we should have the opportunity to do that. I'm wondering about the putting all the proc, I kind of like putting all the proclamations and stuff on one meeting. But, because then we just can kind of get right into the business of the meeting because I agree that the problem with is that we make decisions and then it doesn't come back. And there's only so many days in a year. So so I don't know what you guys are thinking about the, the three meetings, but I'd definitely like to, you know, explore those opportunities.
So just so I understand what you're saying is we have three meetings, continue the three meetings, but have them more mixed than-
Yeah, just have a three meeting. We were already coming here for three meetings. So if there's stuff that needs to be for water or electric, I think we've gotten to where they can put it on different things or they can put it on one meeting. It doesn't matter. But it doesn't have to be the electric meeting. Or I mean, the utilities meeting. It can be the third meeting.
Okay.
I, I don't know if you guys agree.
Turn his light on.
James, turn, turn his light on.
Well, the, so, so the reason that that meeting was, was set was because we had some pretty standard operational things that obviously needed to come in commission just because of the dollar value. There aren't a lot of water and electric items that were twenty to thirty thousand dollars and maybe a couple hundred thousand. Setting that meeting up dedicated for them meant they didn't have to sit in these meetings until ten or eleven o'clock at night just to get to their item on new business because it was too large to put on consent, which is why we kind of created that, because we usually only have two meetings. We created that third meeting, so we had that standalone utility meeting. And it didn't make these meetings go even longer. Now, obviously, when there are items, because it's time sensitive, you will see utility items thrown on a regular mission agenda, but we try to keep those separate. But your idea is to just create just three, now three commission meetings every month? Okay. And then we would, and we would still be doing, I would assume the pre-agenda meeting for each one of those meetings, the Friday before. So we would now add another pre-agenda meeting as well each month. But, but if you're gonna do a pre-agenda meeting before every commission meeting, like we currently do now, we would also be adding a Friday, another Friday pre-agenda meeting before that third meeting of the month as well.
I, I mean, I'm not to, I'm not saying that this is what I want. I'm just saying for, for what Anthony was saying with the community meeting, I was just kind of exploring the idea of why, why does the, all the utilities things have to be on that one meeting? And it does make sense that the directors don't want to come to all three.
That was the reason.
So and they can keep those on that third meeting. That's completely fine, but can we have other things on that meeting? I guess is what I'm looking at. Can we have other items that we would be talking about? Because on the- Other items that we would be talking about, because on the uh, utility meeting as well. Keeps the keep the utility stuff on the utility meeting, but don't make it limited to utility. Don't call it the utility meeting. It's just a commission meeting where the utilities have a section.
Well, which is, we've sort of been starting to blend that in a little bit. Anyway, we've been doing that lately.
Uh, right, but I don't want, but then people are like, oh, well, this is advertised as utility. Why are you talking about park rangers? Um, and I think that it would be. You know, I mean, the the pre-agenda meeting, um. It's there, it's the two weeks right at the end. So I mean, you could have one pre-agenda meeting to cover both of those meetings.
I frankly, I like the pre-agenda meetings. This is the only chance we get to talk. It's one hour. Where you don't have to come in and it's one more chance for us to talk about stuff. Um, I have some comments, but I'm gonna wait till Ms. Malaga. Oh, you're done. Mr. McBoy.
Um. I think that the logic of having the utility meeting. It's kind of. More a utility kind of thing is pretty reasonable. Not making the utility directors wait till late into a regular meeting. Um, I have a bit of a discomfort with the mention of. Community engagement. And I also have a discomfort with a lot of discussion that's happened over the last six months, eight months, whatever year of the business of the city. I would argue that community engagement is very much central. To public government and to the so-called American experiment in democracy. It's a very participatory thing. Sort of sliding it off somewhere or other. And kind of saying or implying, well, that's not really the business of the city. I think the business of the city or the business of us as elected officials is to make sure that. Democracy is very participatory. And does that mean it's messier? Does that mean it tends to take longer? Yes, it does. But there's a reason for that. And there's a reason why the things that I read earlier, that you want things to be. In the sunshine, you want things to be that the public can participate actively in them. Uh, I would say. The current structure of two main meetings, two regular commission meetings with pre-agenda meetings that feeds both of those. Um. And a separate utility meeting. Makes a lot of sense. Maybe we want to tighten up a little bit on how many proclamations, but those proclamations. Or honors often are things that relate to people in the community. That we want to honor the lifeguards because they've done some pretty cool things, or we want to honor some police officers who've rescued something that, you know. Those are reasonable. I don't know that you want to sort of slide them off and imply they're less the business of the city. So I. Don't see. The proposed restructuring as. Really gaining us very much. I'm very con, very hesitant about the word efficiency. What are you getting more of for less of? Are you getting stronger public participation? Are you getting stronger democracy? Are you giving people in our city that has a very low turnout for voting? Are you giving them more reasons or less reasons to want to vote, to want to participate? That would be a measure. That I think would be a reasonable one. And a yardstick to use as we decide how we do things. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Malaga.
Thank you. I do have one thing that, um, I I agree with the proclamations and the honors. And I think that if we could do them on just the first meeting of the month. For the entire month.
That makes.
And just knock them all out. You know, the first meeting of the month, whatever proclamations are in, whatever honors are in, that's what we're doing. If somebody comes forward on week three, well, then they have to wait till the next month. Um, I think that would really even, you know. Let's see how that works and then maybe go to the next step. When should we have presentations from the CRA or PBSO? Should we, you know, do that once every quarter and set them up to where we're just doing that on that meeting? Getting our questions out to PBSO CRA, but I think that this is a living. Structure as we go and as, I mean, times are changing and evolution. But I think that if we, I agree with some of the things that I really would like to see the presentations and the honors just go on the second regular, I mean, the first regular city commission meeting.
Let's try then.
Because we Melissa knows ahead of time. And like I said, if we put it out there. If you want something red, you have to contact the city ahead of time. We do only do it on the first, because a lot of cities don't even do it anymore. I kind of like that we still do it and I don't want to get rid of it altogether, um, like today with the veterans. So I would like to make that suggestion.
Okay, yeah, because one of my concerns was the timing of stuff, because sometimes, like, you know, the week of something, something, so. To be ahead of it rather than behind.
Right.
And if something comes up during the month, the people will just have to understand that they'll be honored at the first or the next meeting.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Um. Yeah, I mean, we did do the utility. I was, we were all here when we did, I mean, it became the poor people had to come. Okay, so you understand. I I see your. I haven't spoken. Um. This matters for consensus. You know, we're talking about backlog of. Work. And I'm hearing a lot of let's look for consensus on some things. And I don't know that I I don't hear anybody else's opinions about it, but. We, um. Things are busy as they are. Uh. I just don't, I just know there'd be an official place for consensus that for in the meetings. I just, I don't understand that. Because we just can't keep doing consensuses to keep the staff. Busy while we're asking for them to do things faster. So that's, that's an issue that I have. I don't. I don't know that can, I mean. That's, I just don't think the consensus things, if something comes up, but I don't know that it needs its own. Thing. Um. And I I also, I mean, the community engagement, I don't agree with that, that name. I mean, it's, it can be the third meeting of the month. It doesn't have to. Because community engagement is a little bit different than anybody, because our community can come up and speak at any meeting. Yeah. So it's not like. Um, and we have a legal obligation. Right, and we do, and we're doing it. Um. So, um, as far as that, my my input would be the, I agree with first presentation is the first meeting of the month. That sounds fine. Um, I really don't agree with um, a whole separate agenda for consent, item for consensus, because I really hope that we don't have consensus at every meeting. Um, if there's something that comes up and as far as our reports. We're saying just do it, what, at the second meeting? The our committee, our commission reports, or is that what? What's this, Mr. Segway?
I I would say if for if we're going to, it sounds like we we agree to doing proclamation and honors um, at the first meeting. We also do our reports then. And I would suggest um, any non-agenda presentations. So that's like members of the community wanting to give a presentation about a subject or we have a. I I know, but but having them be in that first meeting, so that that first meeting. Has our liaison reports, it has those presentations, it has the proclamations and the honors. Um, and that way. The the other two meetings are a fairly clean um, agenda. That's about the ordinances and votes.
Yeah, I'm sort of low, I I'm, my fear is if we're going to do presentations and. Other things, we're going to load up that first meeting. And a lot of times we have, you know, we have business to do.
Sure, but but it it, when we. When we do a little bit of it in each meeting. It becomes terribly inefficient. Because it's done at the beginning of the meeting when we're all fresh and awake and kind of jovial, and there's a lot of joking around and in interaction. And it just takes time to get between the one and the other and so on. And I know it's five minutes here, five minutes there, but when we only have about two and a half to three hours of usable time. A half hour's a lot.
Can I make a suggestion in the in regards to the commission? Um, liaison report? What if we did our liaison reports at the utility meeting? Since at the end of the utility meeting, since they're short, they're normally not as heavy. It's the last meeting of the month. It'll give us all more to report on, but that just might make it. I see Jamie's light on. He doesn't.
Jamie's got the light on. What's Mr. Brown?
It it sounds like we're. Kind of going back to the utility concept, I guess, Mr. Segway, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but just going off of last week's utility meeting, we were done in less than an hour and a half.
That's wonderful.
So unless I'm incorrect, I I think the initial idea was since those meetings are shorter. Like there was. Work we could have done last Tuesday night because we were done in an hour and a half. Had we had some of these things on that meeting. That's more things we can remove from, I guess, that for that, that first meeting, from what it sounds like, if we're loading all this up. We're not going to get to a lot of business on that first meeting of the month. But then if you still have the utility meeting, it's ending. Pretty, pretty early. I mean, other than the the reports they give at the beginning. Um, most of the time, unless we're talking PCA or someone that's coming back every other quarter or so, um. Those items, you guys run through those pretty quick and do business because they're just operational things. There are lots of money. But it's just maintenance items that that they kind of run through pretty quickly. So. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so I I think what I'm hearing from 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 my colleagues is general agreement that. We have three meetings. And if meeting one, we put the proclamation, the honors and 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 public presentations there. If meeting two, we give utility priority um, on on that that agenda.
No, meeting three.
Or meeting three or whatever, one meeting to give utility. Priority. And then have our liaison liaison reports on the other meeting. I I believe that would allow us to get through these agendas a heck of a lot quicker and a lot more efficient. Um, I did want to touch base on the the consensus. Piece.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I just want to give you an update. We have a minute and thirty-six seconds left.
Motion to extend.
Second.
To waive the thirty minutes.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm sorry, who's making the motion since the mayor can't make a motion?
Mr. Segway made it and Ms. Mimi May seconded it.
And I'm sorry, was it for a certain time or?
Not for a certain time, which I think we should make a certain time.
Twenty minutes.
For another twenty minutes?
Fifteen.
How about we just put it?
Motion to extend for twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes. So Madam Clerk, can you keep an eye on us twenty minutes? And we're now down to three minutes each.
Okay, can I just?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Reiterate what I'm saying is that the for the commission liaison reports, I think we should do that at the utility meeting, the last last meeting of the month.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just for time saves.
So I I would, I would agree with that. So to to restate it, proclamation, honors and and non-agenda or 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 public presentations in meeting one. In meeting three, utility. Gets priority for the agenda as well as we do our liaison reports. Um, I did want to talk about the consensus piece. Um. I understand that it is sometimes gets frustrating that we are adding to the queue. But there are a lot of items that residents bring up and that we as commissioners need to be in the driver's seat for. And this is our only opportunity to to bring these things forward and and have discussion on it. Um, just like with uh, time to discuss items, we have to have some self-control. With with that, otherwise it can get out of out of control. Um. But I really do feel it's important that if we had a a set. Section for that. And made it incumbent upon us to come prepared. Um, a lot of times when I bring things to consensus, I wish I had sent you guys all an email. Prior or, you know, through the city manager and had had him distribute that prior. So that, just like earlier today, you know, Commissioner Malaga said, I I don't necessarily understand what you're saying right now. I want some more time to research it. I don't want to give you my opinion right now. If we make it a standard part, um, and then we can all do our job on the background of doing that, I think it'll be a healthier way of of getting those things in and we'll be able to look at them. And um, especially. If we have them on everything, we can provide them before, then then the vote's quick. It's discuss or not discuss. Yes, no.
Thank you. Um, the other, the other side of that, though, is if we have an agenda item every month for that, there's a compulsion, nature hates a vacuum. And I just hate to see that we feel like we have to be compelled to come up with consensus at every meeting or dismiss it. So I mean. Um, you know. So I I don't know what to do with that. And we're down to really time. Mr. McBoy, two minutes.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure what the matters for consensus is. Um, I hear a lot of asking for consensus at pre-agenda meetings. I hear a lot of asking, can we have consensus for things? I think one of the things, and I don't say this out of self-interest, but in general. There can be situations where there's a reason to have five or seven or whatever members, more than one member of a board, and it's that you have a range of views. And it's probably worth thinking about that. Each person who sits up here was elected. By people in the community, so they by definition represent views in the community. And I think one of the things that we need to be careful of is. Does one set up a structure? That basically disenfranchises a section of the community. And the whole consensus thing. You know, you heard the laughter in the room when I said, I hope that people remember that when. Um, when I bring something or other up. It's not about me, it's about that there will always be minority members, but those people need to have their views. Because they're representing people. Those people's views need to be able to be heard, have a reasonable chance at. Getting some some traction or votes or whatever. Uh. That's my concern. I don't know what the matters for consensus. I don't understand it. I I think we do that already with the pre-agenda. So I'm not sure what that is. I'm happy to hear more. I I would like to point out that I believe our attorneys will tell us. That public participation, you better have that at every meeting or you will get into trouble with the law.
Not suggesting that.
Well.
Thank you.
One of the ones that I see doesn't have it at every meeting.
Well, it comes up over every item. So, you know, my, I I just don't see that we need a special item for approval of matters for consensus. Other than that. Um.
So I'd like to make a motion.
It's, um, I'm sorry.
I can make a motion.
Um, give me one second. Can we just once I have had the lease to talk about? I'm just looking at the rest of this. So. Three meetings, we're going to. Figure out the name of the third meeting. You know, it's not going to be only utilities. It's not going to be community engagement. We'll figure out a name for that. Just call it the third, third meeting, right? Um. Okay. We just got this tonight. Okay, so you're the, or the rule, where it says rule five, there's not much change to that except. The matters for consensus. Otherwise, it's pretty much staying. In the. Order.
You know what we could do for the matter of consensus?
Yeah.
Is do it at the pre-agenda meeting in general.
Yeah.
However, if something comes up that you believe is time sensitive. When we talk about at the beginning, are there any changes or additions? You could say, I would, I would like to get consensus for this item. Or whatever it is. And then there's, yeah, and then there's no press. I I know, I hear what you're saying, because if if. If it's there, somebody's going to think they have to do it.
Right.
And um, you don't have to do it every time. So I think that if if it's okay with you, I'd like that to just be not a separate thing. It's going to be at the at the pre-agenda. That's already twice a month. And if there's something we want to bring up, we can at the beginning. Does that work for everyone?
It works for me. So, Ms., uh, we, Mr. Mr. Segway would like to make a motion. Do you want to speak quickly before?
I just noticed that you didn't have anything on on rule four. So I just wanted to point out rule four. Number two. The chair shall preserve order. The chair may call to order any member of the commission or any member of the public who shall violate any of the rules. Or otherwise disrupt the orderly proceedings of the meeting. The chair shall decide all questions of order subject to a majority vote on an appealed decision. And I think that because we're going over this, the chair needs to be respected. And if she says. You know, gives us a time certain, or you get two minutes, you, she's trying to run the meeting and we need to honor that. That's, I just want to point that out.
Yeah, there are moments where it doesn't feel like that. Um, so Mr. Segway, would you like to make a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion to amend our policy such that we have three regular commission meetings. In the first regular commission meeting, we have proclamations, honors and public presentations not attached to the agenda items. In the third commission meetings, the utility departments get priority position on those agendas. And we have our commissioner liaison reports. The city attorney and city manager are present on all three meetings. And I'd like to amend our policy as such.
Second.
All in same.
Wait, wait. A question on it real quick. When you said the first meeting. Did, did we have public presentation and non-agenda items on all three meetings? Because I I didn't hear it that way, and I just wanted to double check that.
Public comment. Public comment, but not presentation.
Okay, I just wanted to double check that that's what you meant. So like if the the. Nest wanted to get up and present, they do it at that meeting. But we're always going to have, are there non-agenda items?
Yes.
That people want to talk about. I just want to double check. I want to make sure everybody gets to talk.
Public participation.
Okay, okay, then I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comments on this?
I have one, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we have one here too. Let's, I'll go first, Ramsey McLeod.
Nobody's wearing here.
I just have one comment on, he, he just said in his motion that the first meeting was presentations and, um, proclamations and no agenda items. That's what, but what you said was something different. And, uh, Melissa, can you read that motion back? Because it sounded like he said.
We don't really ask, we'll address.
But he just, it's on the record.
There will be agenda items on the meeting.
I, I need to know what we're voting on and that's a pretty important.
I'm going to try to keep control of this meeting.
Well, I'm sorry. It just, that's what it sounded like to me in the audience.
We'll confirm it or whatever.
Ramsey McLeod, twenty-four South C Street. I believe we have added enough rules and changes to how our commission meetings are run that we don't need more, much less an additional meeting each month. I am not in favor of starting meetings earlier or allowing them to run past eleven PM. Recently, decisions have been made after our YouTube channel time has run out, and that is not fair to residents who try to keep in the know about what is going on. The pre-agenda meetings have gone from being a time for you to go over the agenda. So everyone has the same understanding of the items listed there to a meeting where you are making decisions, giving directions to staff, or making queries about agenda items in a, a particular member wants to bring forth. So basically another meeting without citizen input. You are now having to be timed when speaking so an item can be discussed for thirty minutes. And if not resolved, it goes to a workshop or special meeting. The only reason all of these changes have had to be made is because Commissioner McVoy felt it was perfectly fine to bring up new agenda items at an actual commission meeting and his persistence of having to make statements prior to asking a direct question and/or summarizing what everyone else's input is. Efficiently using your time is what all you need to focus on. You, once you have made your input on a topic, then let others provide their input and move along. This constant going back and forth on a single point is what's making meetings run so long. Lately, I've noticed that the agenda seems to be overbooked with items needing to be addressed. This is causing some items to be moved to the utility meeting in order to get them resolved. Thus requiring attend, residents to attend an additional meeting not planned for. All of this is a direct result of not using your time efficiently and conducting yourselves in an immature manner. And I understand why you won't answer questions from the residents, but I don't understand why staff isn't prepared to come to these meetings and answer questions proposed by residents, which might present more information you were unaware of or not thought to ask.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Uh, yes, the only comment from Sam Smith, one oh nine North Palm Way. What does appropriate social, ethical and orgisat, organizational norms and city-related activities mean? I doubt any of you can define it or would agree on what this means. I shall work together with others with mutual respect to achieve organizational goals, recognizing that the unity of purpose. So if a commissioner has a different position than the majority of the commissioners, does that mean they are in violation of this teamwork provision in the proposed code of civility? I don't want all of the commissioners working together on every issue. I want commissioners representing residents who often have a different position than the majority of this commission these days. I would really like to see the mayor stop interrupting Commissioner McVoy at every turn. I don't even agree with McVoy most of the time. But he should be permitted to speak without interruption, just like the other commissioners. And more importantly, the mayor needs to stop calling for a vote before public participation. I would reject the proposed code of civility as it appears to be a backdoor effort to stymie commissioner debate and public participation. That's the last comment, but, um, I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
So, um, I actually pulled up the reso in Word so I could like start editing it. Um, and I thought I heard that commission liaison reports would be on the second agenda of the month. So now I just want to clarify that I'm getting it correct, that the first meeting of the month will have proclamations and presentations, and the third meeting will have the, um, will have commission liaison reports. And the other meetings will have both city manager and city attorney.
Correct.
Correct.
And each, and each meeting will have agenda items, not just proclamations.
And then lastly, this resolution came back primarily, I mean, months ago regarding adding something to the rule that actually doesn't, isn't in there right now. Let's see, rule thirteen, I think it was.
It was.
Yeah. So there was a rule thirteen added, um, regarding, I don't have the, that particular reso in front of me, but I know there was something, the comment I just read had to do with the, um, comments during the meeting pertaining to city-related items. Do you have a copy of that Glenn? Or do you know any, like, is that something that you want included when the resolution comes back, bearing in mind that obviously it can be deleted when, from the final resolution?
I'm not sure we understand what your question is.
My question is, it was a rule thirteen. Right now it's in, it's reserved for future consideration. And there was something that Elizabeth came up with to deal with having comments related to city-related items only.
The commission comments or comments from the public?
Um, no, it was the commission comments.
I, I believe that was brought up in a pre-agenda by Commissioner Malaga. We all talked about it and came to consensus not to do that.
Because it's too restricting. How do you define it?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Okay.
Okay.
I heard you.
Cool. Okay. Thank you. She's cool.
I can ask a question.
Okay, Mister, uh, Glenn?
Since you brought up rule thirteen, you didn't have any discussion on the proposed rule thirteen.
We don't have a proposed rule thirteen. We, oh, we're theirs. Well, we're not there yet.
Right. That means we're not going to add that to what's coming back to you. What we're going to bring back is what you voted on tonight, but not anything that wasn't discussed.
We're taking, I, I, we're taking one thing at a time. Now the agendas. Wow. On the bottom, it's, it's.
There are a bunch of other things.
I'm sorry, we've got too many people talking, Mister Mc, uh, Trusimia.
On the red line version.
Yep.
Proposed rule thirteen that says turnaround time for actions.
Oh.
That wasn't discussed at all. So.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
And was, was this document with the red lines for resolution eighteen, twenty, twenty-five, was this included in the backup? And was it included by the deadline for the backup? Cause I have a real problem procedurally that this shows up on the desk here. The public has never seen it. The public has never had a chance to look at it, any of it. Give, call me up and say, hey, I think this is wonderful, or I got a problem with page three, or whatever it is. I believe that's kind of a violation of the way we're supposed to do business. We shouldn't even be talking about this if it wasn't in the backup. And it wasn't in the backup by the deadline. Has anybody, and so I need a clear answer. Was this in the backup for the deadline for this meeting?
That was emailed out by Shayla yesterday, and we provided hard copies for each of you today.
Okay. So the answer to my question is absolutely unequivocally, no. It was not in the backup by the deadline. We got them today. We should not be discussing any of this and certainly not voting on it. And I suspect that, I, I don't know, some people didn't go to that ethics training, but it reminds us of a lot of things of how you do business. There are requirements, legal requirements, and this does not meet it. It doesn't meet our own rules, which says you have to have, you can only deal with things that are in the backup by the deadline. And we've been very cavalier about that.
Thank you. Um, my response to that, and I'll just give a quick response to that, is it was labeled as a discussion. I think this is an aid to the discussion. I don't think it was really.
It was not in the backup and we are closing of.
Thank you, Mister McVoy. Mister Brown, were you?
Yeah. So, so this obviously was a discussion item, um, Commissioner, uh, City wanted to discuss, uh, you guys are not voting on, on this, this red line document. Um, I think you just wanted to provide and speak for yourself, but I think you just wanted to provide a hard copy so everyone could actually see what he was going.
Then we do it by the deadline.
Mister McVoy, really, we don't argue. My question is, we're.
You guys are voting on.
Right. And also, we're, we're, it's, this is, um, is this going to come back as a finished product that we actually vote on? Today we're discussing and making recommendations to the clerk to draft the new resolution. We're not voting on the resolution tonight. Where there's always opportunities, when, when the resolution does come back to us, to have public comment, to have input, to have, you know, discussion about it. But this is to get something going, I think is.
That, that is great. Like, like the clerk mentioned, she's taking notes as you guys are having this conversation. So what would happen is we would bring back an updated draft of your rules and procedures based on direction given tonight. So you would have a complete document to now correct and to then vote on. Yes.
Thank you. Anyone? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Malaga?
Um, and I understand Commissioner McVoy's concern. I did print it out because when I saw the email, but on our staff report in black and white, the only reason I don't have a problem with it is it says changes such as starting the meeting at five or five thirty, making the third meeting of the month a community meeting rather than a utility meeting, including LDR amendments, presentations, proclamations, and having meetings extended until midnight. So it is written in black and white. I think this was just more of a tool for, hey, these are some more ideas that I had. So I understand your concern. If it wasn't on this front page and the community wasn't aware of these changes, I wouldn't want to vote on this. So.
Yeah. And, and it's going to come back to us. We can always revise it. We can always amend it. We can always discuss it. But this is direction to staff to create a resolution. So thank you. Um, okay. So we're going now. Next up.
Uh, Madam Mayor, we, we didn't actually vote. And I, I just wanted to clear up for Ramsey. I, I think I garbled my words when I, when I said, um, public presentations that were not on the agenda, not that we weren't going to go through agenda items. It was public presentations that are not on the agenda.
Okay. Public present, public comment and non-agenda.
That, that's on everything. Yeah, yeah.
Everything.
Yes. One, 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 one hundred, one hundred percent. So I don't, I don't know if we need to vote to, because there was a motion.
And they were giving.
Direction.
Direction.
Give us direction to staff more than a vote. Yeah.
So good.
Yeah, we're, we're. I know, I know, we keep using that word. Okay, next up.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, but there was a motion and a second. So does Commissioner Segrich want to rescind it and ask for consensus maybe?
Rescind it and ask for consensus for the same.
I consent. Thank you.
I do not consent to the limiting, um, commissioner comments or reports or liaison to one out of the three meetings.
Well, when it comes up, we can talk about it again. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Didn't call on you, but that's okay. Um, okay, what's next?
Fourth of July.
Another.
On our extension.
Yeah, we are. How much, how many more minutes do we have to this, uh, twenty minutes?
Nine minutes, forty-six seconds.
The, the most important one, in, in my opinion on this was establishing deadlines. Um, for staff to come back once we've voted on, on certain things. Um, I think this helps staff prioritize and will help us get through our backlog. We have many things that we've voted on months and months and months ago that we have not seen back. And I think things get lost in the shuffle when we don't actually have expectations of time. When we have expectations of time, I believe it helps staff prioritize as well as um, look at what kind of resources they need to, to accomplish this stuff. Um, we have some stuff that's been sitting out there for well over six months. And there, I suspect that there's stuff that's been sitting out there nine, ten, eleven months before I even got on the commission.
Thank you. Um, and I think there's probably good reasons for that. Based on staff time and, and things. And, um, I, I, I don't know. I, I don't really, I understand the, um, I know that Mister Perry keeps kind of a timeline of what's going on and, you know, so we don't forget what's, what's on the agenda of what's on the list. But having worked as staff, you don't know what's coming up. You don't know how long someone's going to take. So I just, I, I'm not opposed to the idea of keeping things up, but, um, Ms. Malaga? I would just, one minute, let's keep, if we're going to go forward, we're going to go forward.
I guess I'm a little impartial to this because this to me is micromanagement.
It's operation.
And that's operational. We are policymakers. I look at this and this is something that I would do to my staff and my business. Um, which I actually did yesterday to all of my instructors, gave them a deadline in two weeks. I think, and I hear what you're saying, because I asked staff to work on something two and a half years ago and it still hasn't been brought forward, Glenn. My four rent signs. Um, so I mean, there are things that I have asked, you know, sometimes it's the law. Sometimes it's like Stu had to go to Boca and he had to do ride alongs and he had to do the research. And I, I believe that staff is always working.
Yeah.
And I just don't want to put any more constraints on them. And I understand, but like I asked earlier about the master, the green space master plan or whatever, it's open space. Like we haven't had an update on that. I would like to have that update before we, you know, make a decision on park rangers. And what does that look like? I think time certain things, if it's a big thing, we need to as a body make a decision on, okay, we've agreed, we've, we have voted on this. We would like an update in sixty days, thirty days, ninety days, but to.
Thank you. That's a minute.
Thank you. I, I think we get your point. Yeah, I think this is really operational. I think we have to be very careful. Policy versus operation. And I think there's a reason, I mean, that's something that we could be, if we start interfering with operations, we can be censured. Um, so that's, to me, that, that's my feeling. I, I share the, Mr. McVoy, one minute.
Um, I, I think the comments by Vice Mayor Malaga and by the mayor are pretty consistent with mine. I support those concerns.
Thank you. Yeah, really. That was so quick.
You all said.
We appreciate it. We appreciate it. So as far as that.
Wait a minute.
Oh, you're not done. Oh, shut up. He wants to fill it in. So, um, yeah, I think this is really operational. And I think we have to be careful. Mister Segrich, one minute.
We set deadlines all the time for this kind of stuff. We set the deadlines for when backup is due, when they have to be posting it. This is more of the same. It's not operational. What we are doing is, and I would ask our, our attorney for his opinion on this. Um, we are setting the time goals and the policy of the commission, where, when we would like to have things come back. Now, operational is how do you accomplish that? So we are setting the goals at this point. And then it's up to staff to figure out how do they accomplish that? Do they hire more staff? Do they need more budget? Do we need more, more time? Do they have to reprioritize? That is operational. That's the implementation. So I would ask our attorney's opinion on whether setting deadlines like this is operational or within our purview as policy.
Well, you have, you know, a lot of discretion on setting policy. And if they have deadlines for specific items, you get the, the concerns that you're now making kind of a general statement that everything's going to be back in these things in this timeline. So that does get close to an operational line. So, uh, I hear you both sides in this, but it's real close to that line, whether it crosses the line or not, like an umpire in a ballgame, you're out of your save. It's real close line.
Would we be able for a particular item to ask for time certain?
We, we've, we've done that.
That, that, that. You sometimes.
I mean, we've done that. We need this.
Priority, bring that back.
And usually it's because staff knows that there's a timeframe that we have to meet, not our timeframe, but that there's a timeframe. Um, so Mister Brown? And then we're out of time.
Yeah. So I was going to bring this up during, uh, city manager comments, but, um, last week, uh, attorney, uh, Elizabeth, she got with William, with Annie, uh, before she left. Um, and updated this substantial list of just for the, the legal aspect of things, ordinances, resos, all the stuff that still needs to come forward. Um, we also have a separate list that, that Troy, um, kind of keeps up as well. We're talking about compiling this into, basically like a master document. The problem is we, we have such a long list of things. It's almost like we need some type of priority level set. Um, as to what you get, because it's all important. Um, obviously some things might be lower on the list than others, but it all needs to come forward. But as Commissioner May said earlier, there are only so many meetings in the year. A lot of our meetings go until eleven o'clock. You can only cram so many things in. Um, so at some point in time, we need to decide, how are we going to get all this stuff brought forward without adding more meetings and more meetings and more meetings? We just need to know, how do you guys, you know, how, how do we go, how, how do we move forward and how do we get through all this stuff? Because there is a lot. There's a lot. And we only have so much staff. We only have so many attorneys. So again, unless we're talking about bringing on more people, hiring more of Glenn's staff, ramping up to knock a lot of this stuff out, then now we're talking budget implications and everything else. But we're going to have to figure out how do we move forward and what do you guys want to do?
Thank you, Ms. May. Thank you, Ms. May.
Um, let's, let's do one thing at a time. The list that you're talking about with Elizabeth and all of that, how about we start with that list? And get it together and share it with all of us. And then we can come back and discuss anything else about this. But I think that the, having that list that we all share and see like a shared document is a super amazing first goal. And I think that's, we start there and stop tonight. And then we can come back from there. That's what I think.
I live with, I can live with that. Well, Mr. McBoy?
To, to get the list.
Yeah. The current, the current list.
Current list of what we have, where it is and that kind of stuff.
We, we need to compile, because keep in mind, yeah, yeah. So, so.
Yeah, we won't, we don't want it tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. We have a partial right now.
So how long do you think it'll take?
And then keep updating it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I'll do it with Mr. Perry.
Yeah.
Be have like a status and, and.
It's okay. It's in draft form always.
Yeah.
Okay. We are out of time. Madam Clerk, are we out of time? Seems like we should be.
You say you do generate a lot of work, much more.
You know, you get.
I, I understand that, but.
What you're saying, much more than?
Much more than this about everybody else. I mean, you, you just, whatever, every city has their own personality. The Lake Forest personality has always been to generate a lot of discussion and a lot of work. So when you see the list, you might be overwhelmed.
Well, that's my point. I think we need to see it in black and white because there might be things on the list from nineteen forty-two that we don't need to do. Because, you know, we have the internet.
Okay. Matt, I, we're out of time. We're, we're well over the twenty minutes that we were given. Um, I think we have consensus. Madam Clerk, you haven't answered my question about time. I think we're there.
Four minutes and thirty-five seconds. Like you don't have to go, you don't have to use all twenty.
Mr. Sedgwick, you got thirty seconds.
That's fine. I would ask that that list include the dates, um, because I think dates are very important. So we know how long things have been on the list. Um, and I would ask that that list have a priority column so that we can help our city managers set the priorities.
Well, I think that.
And then the last thing is I would ask that that list be accessible. So put it on OneDrive so we can all access it on demand. Because when we have to sit there and request the list and wait three days and everything else like that, that's not good. It should, it should, it should be. Right. We'll put it on OneDrive.
One, I don't know what that is.
A shared document so that we can access it.
Careful about.
The real, the real time.
Yeah, I, I mean, turn two, if you're all sharing on one document.
We don't, we can be read only. And so it's completely up to them. Yeah. Then sent, then can we have it sent out by email once a week?
Once a week? What are you talking about?
Giving the list.
We're going to get a list. We're going to take a look at the list.
And then as we move forward through our meetings, the list will grow and new things will be added and things will come off on it. It, it needs to be a living document.
Ms. May gave a good suggestion. Let's see, see where we're at before we start adding things to the staff. So we're going to get a list with some dates when things happened. We'll do it. Can we do that within a month?
We would definitely try. Yeah, we'll definitely try.
I mean, there's a partial list at this point.
We have multiple to keep in mind too, because this is one of the things that, uh, the camp, so we had an internal document that, uh, that Mr. Perry keeps. This is a separate document that was created last week. So there are multiple documents. We're now talking about compiling into one master document, which now has different columns, status, all this other stuff. So.
Day was asked for and, um, what was asked for and the status.
They may have some suggestions too of what columns you want.
Yeah.
I would say let's ask for it, give them a reasonable, you know, do your best to get it to us sooner rather than later.
Okay. First, we.
For instance.
Well, we have, I mean, we don't have a meet. If, I don't want to demand staff to do something that they can't do. So I mean, again, so, um.
Like I said, we, we will do the best we can to get everything together.
I'm good with that.
Keep in mind, we have day to day operations.
We do have our city to run. You, you do have a city to run.
So, so we will obviously do our best with this.
All right. And we'll be bugging you if you don't, if we don't get it, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay. So I don't think we need a vote on that.
Do a noise or.
Moving. I think we're taking a comfort break. Please. I know that you're gone. All right. Let's keep, we have a consensus. Okay. July fourth, this is, um, new business A. Mr. Sword.
Good evening, uh, Stuart Sword Leisure Services. So this is a courses of action brief that the Leisure Services Department has spent numerous hours and days preparing uh, with the assistance of our special events team. Uh, the manager consulting with other municipalities, consulting with vendors, doing some elementary planning on conceptual courses of action. So this brief is designed to present courses of action and receive direction from, uh, the dais. The pretty much executive summary, this, this is a trifecta of, uh, special events. Uh, July fourth, twenty twenty-six is the two hundred and fiftieth celebration of our independence. I'm calling it a birthday celebration of our country. That date falls on a Saturday evening. Uh, and July fourth is always considered a premium event. So in terms of vendors, it is a trifecta of supply and demand. Uh, onto the next slide here, the roadmap. I know most of us, uh, I was still in the army when some of this was occurring, but most of us have lived and experienced some of this. So I'm not going to specifically go line by line. The historical roadmap, you know, as we look at lessons from history and, you know, how things occurred. There are some deductions and lessons learned that we can take away from this. Some of those deductions are like I mentioned earlier, the July fourth event is a premium event. So if we go to an RFP process for a premium event, that's why we see here there were no submissions and the RFP was canceled. So I present that we have to look at this through two lenses, the first lens being the upcoming year, how we approach that. And then also perhaps a parallel effort on how we approach subsequent years. And I know that may be a big ask in terms of direction because we may have to see how, you know, a, a certain show performs. Uh, but I just wanted to highlight that. I'm going to go over some, some basic lexicon. I know most, most folks are kind of familiar with, you know, what fireworks are. I just want to point out there are some additions to add new energy to fireworks. There's music choreography. If you've never seen a fireworks, uh, display synchronized to, to mute, to music, to songs, it's very unique. It's new energy. They refer to it as a pyro musical. We could select the songs. The songs are synchronized to the fireworks that are uh, going off and it's, uh, very entertaining. Uh, most fireworks do end with a mad minute, being that it's two fifty, we could look at expanding that to perhaps ninety seconds or a hundred and twenty seconds of a mad minute finale. And there's obviously variations with the altitude, the burst radius, the colors that are used. Uh, drone shows are fairly new, relatively new. It's new energy. They are large crowd producers. I have gone to the drone show in Pompano Beach the last few years and it is an utter mob scene down there. A one A is closed. Atlantic Avenue was closed and it's closed for numerous hours for traffic management. And even when the roads do open up, it's still a, uh, burden on traffic management. That can also be, uh, choreographed to music. Uh, and then a newer trend, uh, is a hybrid show combining, uh, the drone performance with fireworks. In terms of best practice, what industry would recommend would be for the drones to perform first. They set down, they are free and clear of the airspace and then the one minute firework marker goes up and then the fireworks execute. Just so there's no haze or smoke in the, in the air as the drones are performing, perhaps degrade the effects of, of the drones. So I'm just going to highlight, uh, some of the pros and cons. And, and most of these are, are common knowledge. I'm not going to spend too much time on this. Obviously fireworks are traditional. They're affordable within our budget. I did mention earlier that the July fourth, especially this upcoming year is the two hundred and fiftieth celebration. It is a premium event. Vendors pretty much look at a supply and demand, first person to, to contact us and, and book has us. And a lot of vendors give priority preference to returning customers. Uh, that puts us in a unique position. Obviously cons of fireworks, they can be disruptive to some residents that may not want to partake in the celebration. Uh, also can be disruptive to some of our furry friends. There is a cleanup that's required in the fallout area. Canisters do remain on the ground and as we know, there is residue from compounds, elements, chemicals that are used to produce the color patterns.
Hence it's city's responsibility to clean up.
Correct. Onto the next slide in terms of a cost comparison based off the, the yellow bars. I tried to find a chart that could articulate this in the best manner. This is what I selected. So the yellow is runtime and minutes. And the blue bar is the price in thousands. And as you can see, uh, what some of our surrounding municipalities spend. Now this data does come from some public record and some open source. So there's a margin of error there that I, I just couldn't speak to. But it all seems, uh, relatively accurate. Uh, Davey did do a hybrid show. So the price that's indicated there approximately thirty-five thousand dollars for fireworks was matched with another thirty-five thousand dollars for a two hundred drone show. Uh, some of the other municipalities have just aligned that to, to their fireworks. Next slide, historically, uh, if you didn't know, we do launch the fireworks from hole seven on the golf course. And that's what, uh, you can see displayed here, the fallout zone just being north of the bridge. In terms of the, uh, the drone location, I think it's not displaying properly here. Uh, if we did choose to execute with, uh, drones or a hybrid, they could launch from hole six in a close proximity, which would be easy for the fireworks vendor to see that the drones have touched down. They are free and clear of the airspace and then the drones take off. Uh, do have a conceptual sketch in here if we decided to execute at a different venue that I'll brief in a few slides. Drones, obviously a lower fire risk, uh, a tad quieter, pet friendly, customizable. It's a tad quieter. Significant quieter.
Lot quieter.
A lot quieter. The, uh, the cons are they come with a higher cost. A drone vendor company that has a respectable event portfolio and have executed other events. There are companies that are startup and trying to get into the business. I personally would not recommend going with one of those for July fourth, perhaps another event. Uh, but a lot of respectable companies do have an aerospace engineer on staff, even perhaps on ground. They have FAA certified pilot drone operators that have assisted in special operations in the military and certified. So some of these companies come with a premium cost because they're offering premium staff. And it kind of goes back to the basic analogy is you get what you pay for. They can be shorter in duration. They do, uh, have wind restrictions. Typically they like to operate in about sustained winds of twenty miles per hour as a maximum, gusting to thirty. Now, on most days, we would be able to pull off a drone show here, but no one knows what the weather is on July fourth. And like I mentioned, it is on a Saturday evening. So it's kind of hard to, no shift left or right because it's not during the week. It does require open air, you know, launch space. So if we launch, we have to take that in mind with some of our tree canopy where it can take off and touch back down. That's why I mentioned the, uh, the golf course drone shows, if advertised and marketed properly are large crowd drawers. Hence we'll have to do some more traffic management and, uh, uh, and also mentioned, uh, July fourth does fall in the turtle season. So if we were looking at executing a venue, a separate, separate venue, it's not impossible. It would just require some additional planning considerations with staff and the vendor and perhaps the, uh, the maritime.
You mean if it's launched off the beach?
Correct. Correct. Now there are some other options. I, when I get to that concept, I'll brief that, but I did just want to mention that as a planning consideration. Uh, drone show cost comparison, uh, drone shows, uh, one of our nearest municipalities, Pompano, it has become a staple event. They're executing theirs this coming weekend and you see what they get in terms of the animations.
They're doing one.
They're doing, they're doing one on, uh, this coming Saturday.
Not a July fourth.
No, not a July fourth.
Okay.
They're, they execute theirs right outside the turtle season because they do it right off of the beach. It's just easier to execute, less planning considerations. But I think a key takeaway from here is the amount of animations they get and the price that they're paying. Uh, in terms of drones, you see here, no one goes below two hundred drones. I have gone to the Pompano show and in my opinion, it can be underwhelming. You may be expecting large fireworks production and there's just two hundred drones. So even industry experts would say you never want to go below a hundred drones. You definitely want to be in and around two hundred drones and upward from there. Uh, and you can just kind of like digest that for a second, see what they're paying for the amount of drones and the animations. Uh, most shows would come with approximately ten animations. So you, we can select what those animations look like. So we could have some fun with that. Perhaps each district, uh, selects one. The, the electeds could, could select one and, and, and leisure could select the, the tenth animation. Some of the pros of the, uh, the hybrid show appeals to both, uh, nostalgia and modern visuals. It accommodates for any weather considerations, implement weather, high gusts of wind. Uh, and there are numerous add-on options. Some of the cons, again, like I use the, the basic analogy. Uh, you get what you pay for in terms of the, the vendor that we select. Drones could be canceled, uh, by, by light rain. They have, and you'll see on the concept sketch that's going to come up, they do have a, uh, uh, pretty much a buffer zone, a safety net. They call it a soft fence and a hard fence. You know much about drones, most drones, if they stop receiving the frequency signal and they no longer respond, the program to return to the home base docking station. So it's a safety consideration. There have been some stray drones that did not have that geo fence and did, you know, injure some spectators. So in terms of, you know, a concept, like I mentioned, the, uh, uh, for some reason, the, uh, I don't think the, uh, the concept map is displaying here. But we did have a concept match for execution on the beach. Obviously there's turtle considerations that we'd have to be mindful of and the buffer zone is approximately sixty meters by a hundred and forty meters. Yes, correct. Now we could shift that into the east parking lot. We could shift it into the west parking lot. We could shift the drone docking station onto the south access road. Uh, I have, I have gone down there with some of my staff and looked at the tree canopy. It would allow for drones to take off in that area, but obviously that's compounding some of the traffic management considerations that we spoke of. And it's also obviously like lost revenue because we're now taking the spaces to launch a show and less parking there. The, uh, the hybrid, some of the hybrid shows that are, that are occurring, Deerfield Beach, one hundred and forty-one thousand. Davey, like I said, it was a combination of, of fireworks and two hundred drones. Current, uh, allocations in our fiscal year twenty-six, we do have thirty thousand dollars aligned for fireworks. Now you may ask, why didn't we take this into consideration before the Fourth of July? The majority of the budget, uh, work was done prior to July fourth. And obviously we experienced some friction. Had to do some staff estimates and bring this back forward direction. Seventeen thousand for the stage. It also includes entertainment, children's activities, the production and safety, hiring of additional security staff, road management and barricade twenty thousand. So we do have sixty-seven thousand dollars currently aligned, thirty thousand of which are for fireworks. Uh, staff's recommendation for the, for the drone show, uh, to get, like I mentioned earlier, some of the deductions and lessons learned from our roadmap teach us that vendors perhaps may not respond to an RFP. So we have to be mindful of the procurement policy and what that threshold is. I would recommend that threshold forty-nine, nine, nine, nine. If we do decide to go with a drone show, uh, in conjunction with fireworks, uh, at, at a minimum, we would need to, you know, do a budget amendment for forty thousand dollars or top up the current fireworks if we wanted to just go with a drone show. Uh, my personal and professional recommendation would be to, uh, proceed with caution if we wanted to just drones on July fourth because it's the first time we're doing it. We don't have lessons learned. We don't have, you know, feedback from how does two or three hundred drones look? Pending, uh, comments that will conclude, uh, the presentation. Uh, obviously the options are there for your consideration and direction.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve option three. Motion to approve option three. Okay, option three.
Second for conversation.
Option three, hybrid.
Hybrid drone.
Second for conversation.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second for conversation. We can talk about it now.
Okay.
You're welcome. Um, finally, uh, Ms. Malaga.
Thank you. So I do have some questions. I had emailed to staff, um, in your timeline, which I was out of the room when that slide was shown. There was a huge debacle prior, prior to being here. And you only had one of them listed. There were two debacles for fireworks, which is why when we had this conversation during budget, I had brought up, maybe we could look at drones because it didn't look good on the city. When these two years in a row, the fireworks were obsolete and that Bryant Park was packed with people. So I hear what you're saying. I'm wondering, can we launch off the pier is my first question. So not to lose parking revenue if we did the beach. And I think that we would be able to get someone to sponsor the drone show. I could see somebody saying sponsor. I could see somebody saying sponsored by. And, and or something towards it. Um, but I think that because we have had some good success at Bryant Park with sponsorships. We have partnered with another um entertainment company in the pre, in the past. And I don't want us to not, to not go forward with it because we don't have the funding. But I'm, I also don't want to use the funding if we can go out and get sponsorship for it. I think there's a lot of businesses who would love to be part of that, um, especially in the first year. You know, Lake Worth Beach Drone Show, you know, Pompano is great, but that's Broward County. And when you stand on the beach and you look left and you look right, you can see a million fireworks, but you don't see drones. So I think that this is a great idea. I, I did want to second you just, not just for conversation. Um, but I think that we really need to go hard after sponsorship in regards to this and giving businesses an opportunity to be part of it. And I'd like to see if we could possibly launch from the pier.
Thank you, Mr. McBoy.
If we, I guess I need clarification. If we do it from the pier or at the beach somewhere or other, are we going to charge for parking or would we make parking free that evening? Because.
Good question.
Uh, I, I would really have a problem with a July fourth activity where we're, you gotta pay to get in. Um. So, uh, well, okay, I, um, I, I can go with that. Um, so that would be one concern. I like the hybrid idea. I think your logic of yeah, I don't go full on on the drones the first time, throw a little fireworks, especially if they're separated, you know, there's a finale. Uh, I'm not crazy about doing it at the beach. What is the reason for doing it there? Whereas Bryant Park has a lot of room for people to sit and watch. I don't think there's anywhere near as, I mean, maybe I'm wrong about that, that, that could be. I don't know. To me, it feels more at the, at Bryant Park, but that's just because that's what we've always done. So that might be irrelevant, but um, it's also easier to get to. There's more ways to get to Bryant Park, whereas to get to the beach, you can only go over the bridge. So I, I, I think that's a bit of an argument for Bryant Park. I don't, you know, we do have a drone rule with and I don't, I don't happen to know the season for the oyster catchers. And I don't know if it's a big deal and one night, maybe we just tell the oyster.
Chill, chill and go to Pompano. I don't know.
But we, we. I'd be correct in interpreting your observation of Pompano Beach that it was a traffic problem to mean that people really thought this was pretty cool and they turned out in drones?
Yes, it's, it's, it's another mob scene down there and I, I couldn't quantify it, but I've been down there personally and I wonder if the parking lot.
So people like.
It's, it's a crowd pleaser.
Yeah. So that's good. And if we do, if we hedge our bets this year with drone first and then just in case it falls apart, you, you know, you get at least a little fireworks at the end. I'm, I'm okay with that and, and I, the only concern I would have with the going for sponsors, normal, I, I think that's a good idea. I would be uncomfortable for a July fourth thing. If the sponsors, you know, there's a drone message that says fine.
No.
Yes, not.
Yeah, that I'm fine.
No, not like they get to sponsor their name with a drone.
Yeah.
Okay, so Pompano had three hundred drones. Is, what's on your list?
I have to go back to the slide, but that, if that's what was on there, that was accurate.
And you've seen that with three hundred?
I have.
And it's visually effective. You know, you gotta have a lot to make a visual impact. And was that with three hundred?
Yes, it was, it was very engaging, twelve animations. They did some patriotic, they did some specific to, to the town. Uh, you know, sea life and stuff like that.
That's seventy five thousand dollars.
Correct.
Um, are we willing to spend that kind of money on the drone just alone?
Can we adjust, if you could bring up your last slide?
Well, I'm.
Well, it relates to this.
I'm asking a question. I get to, Mr. McBoy, really? Thank you. Um. Okay, so thirty five to sixty for, what a hundred and fifty drones to two, I mean, that's my question. If we go lower on the price, are we going to have the visual effect that we're looking for?
Professional opinion for a city event, we'd want to be at about two hundred drones at least.
Yeah.
Correct.
Sounds like.
Thank you. Um, so that would be between thirty and, and if we did do some budget magic to make that money available, that doesn't preclude us from still going after sponsorship. So we don't eventually have to use that money. What?
No, it doesn't. The slide that's up there does not mention, it's in our book. Ours is two to three hundred drones. Forty to eighty thousand.
Yeah, it, this must be like a version control. It was missing another slide with the concept sketch. So what you have here, I think, is different than what's in the I drive, what's being shared. So this, the backup is accurate.
Okay, so two to three hundred drones and the backup says forty to eighty thousand dollars for six to ten minutes.
Right.
Okay, because I see up there that the numbers are different.
Yeah, so that's forty to eighty. That's thirty five to sixty for, between, so. So I guess we have to come up with a figure. If we're going to do this, we have to. Yannick, talk about how much we'd want to uh do. Ms. May.
Um, just a question, can you go back to the choices? The options?
Courses of action.
Last slide?
Last slide.
Yes.
This one?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so option three, uh, the, the difference between option three and option four. That's kind of what I'm looking at here. So my, my thinking was that option three was where the both of them were going to be launched from the golf course.
Right.
One in hole six, one in hole seven. Then i- in that situation, everybody would be gathered in Bryant Park.
Correct.
Then option four the, is, uh, where are the fireworks getting launched from?
So the fireworks would remain at their historical location, hole seven.
Bryant Park, can I see the drones?
Probably degraded.
Okay, then I don't want to do that. I want to keep them together.
Right.
Uh, that's why I chose option three and not option four. Keep the beach out of it, keep, because I would agree with you that we would have to send, subsidize the parking and yada, yada, yada. Let's keep it all Bryant Park if we want to do it at the beach another year, but let's just keep everything on the.
That's an experiment.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, if you have it, I just think it'll be better because I know people won't even think to go over to the beach because they've just gone to, and a lot of people go to the golf course. And if you're sitting at the golf course, you're certainly not seeing the beach.
Right.
So um, that's why I didn't pick four and I picked three. So I think, I mean, I, I, Anthony hasn't spoken yet, but I would think that maybe if we all, I'm hearing agreement, could take four off.
Yeah.
No beach this year.
You had a motion for option three, so I think that's what we're going to vote.
I am. I just, we've been talking about the beach for the last ten minutes and I'm just saying, well, option three doesn't include the beach. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Clarification, Mr. Segret.
Uh, thank you. So it, it seems that if we did the beach option, no fireworks would be at the beach, correct?
Correctly. I mean, it's not impossible. It just comes with an additional cost of renting a barge, which is somewhere in the thirty, forty thousand dollar range on top of.
Um. So I, I think the hybrid would, would be uh something good to explore. You know, I think we owe it to the, the residents to have a great show th- this year. Um, looking at, at the budget, we're essentially looking at a forty thousand dollar increase above the sixty seven. Um, you know, do we want to basically cap it at one fifteen and then let, let them go out and try to find vendors? Um, I, I don't know what we have to do in order for um staff to be able to go out and get the vendor without an RFP process. If it's set based on a strict price, you know, do we as the commission override that and give a waiver and say in this instance? Because is that part of our charter or ordinances? How, how do we allow staff to negotiate?
Or we could piggyback on another city's deal that they had. Mr. Brown, could we do that? If Pompano has a.
We would have to get with Valentina on that. I'm not sure what uh this particular contract or what Pompos contract looks like. And if that is a contract that can be piggybacked on.
Okay.
Because some cannot.
Just a thought. So we're talking, let's, let's talk about a number. You're suggesting, Mr. Segret, how much?
One hundred and fifteen.
Not for the drones.
No, that would be total.
Go and do the whole total. We're.
And.
Where is it at?
I got one before this. I'll go, I'll go back to the numbers are different, but they're not all good.
Commissioner, I would have to reamend our motion then to include the amount.
Okay. Let's.
So I'm going to amend the motion to do option three with a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar max. And um, asking for sponsorships.
Understood. And we had sponsors last year, so we will continue to, you know.
Yeah.
Correct.
Second that.
Do we have public comment on that?
So it's about fifty thousand dollars. I have to do the math. So we're talking about about fifty thousand dollars.
Correct. And, and the procurement policy, and I've talked this with Valentina, we have a lot of energy on it, but the procurement policy typically, if the cumulative top cost for one specific good service exceeds fifty thousand, then it goes to RFP. Like I had, had mentioned for this with three quotes, under fifty thousand, so forty nine 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 nine, which is achievable for two, three hundred drones, we could just move forward and reserve something as soon as tomorrow. Uh, but I, I would mention too, we, we should probably should also look at uh an RFP for subsequent years. And a lot of companies will bite on a, a bracketed multi-year where perhaps if we do a five-year agreement with uh, you know, a drone show company, you know, every year they'll give you a deduction of perhaps two thousand dollars for your returning customer. Uh, I wouldn't look at.
Then they definitely have to be proven because if they suck and we have them for five years.
Correct. So we could, we could have that R process. It is kind of lengthy to go through that and vet it. We could have that almost queued up and try to synchron- synchronize it with July fourth and right after that, we, we execute and award that.
Because we have to do an RFP for the fireworks anyway, right?
Not if it's under fifty, forty nine 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 is, is the threshold there, so.
That could be quick, boy, to have something quick to do.
Okay, so uh, we have a motion. I think you need to amend your motion to add it, and you seconded it.
Yes.
So uh, do we have any public comment on this, Madam Clerk? I have none here.
No, I do not, Madam Mayor.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay? Thank you very much.
Yay.
Oh, I'm excited.
I know, that's gonna be fun.
Well, now we have to pick the NAPC theme for all eight days of parties.
It'll be Florida.
Windy or rainy.
Oh, you're in for it now, Stuart. You haven't done the eight days of parties.
Oh, my God.
How do you get ready?
Yeah.
By the time the July fourth comes around, we're exhausted.
Madam Mayor, could I ask one quick question about the sponsors?
About what?
The sponsors?
Yeah.
Just one quick question. Um, will like restaurants and local businesses have the opportunity to have sponsored tents and like food wi- within it? Or are we going strictly with like food trucks and, and that?
No, we, we uh, we have a sponsorship deck that we use and actually kind of refine that as we continue moving forward with events and not over saturate the requests of sponsorship. Uh, ideally, we try to engage with business owners no more than twice a year if they'd like to sponsor, if they'd like to sponsor more. And they reach out to us, obviously, we can line that up. But if you are, for example, I'll use the, the bonfires on the beach because that's starting this, this Friday. Uh, it's presented by Bennys because of the dollar amount that they sponsored and it's supported by Killwinds. So based off the level of your contribution depends on the level of motion and announcements that, that are offered, but all that is on the table.
Thank you. Okay, next up. Busy day, um, B.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, before we go to next up, can I have a motion to extend until eleven?
Motion to extend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, uh, C, fee, the fee waiver request for the Lake Worth Beach teacher fundraiser. That's item number C. Um, I got a call and I gave it to staff. Um. So this is a teacher who has, you know, just been terribly ransacked by cancer. She has been a teacher at Highland Elementary for thirty five years. Do I have a motion? Do I have a suggestion? Somebody turn that light on. Are you here from there?
I am.
Okay, we didn't realize that you were going to read that and there's going to be here. Um.
Christian Kaler, two thirty one.
First, we need a motion and a second just to.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second for conversation.
Okay, um, that, um, and normally you have a couple of minutes for, normally it's, so just a quick, a quick presentation. Thank you.
Christian Kaler, two thirty one, North Elm Street.
You need to turn your mic, yeah. No, all the way, you were, you were on. The red light goes on when it's on.
There you go, you're on.
Perfect. Okay, um, Christian Kaler, Highland Elementary, uh, thirty year veteran teacher, twenty six years in Lake Worth. Um, when it was formerly Lake Worth, now Lake Worth Beach. Um, I'm here tonight to just ask the commission, the mayor um, and the people of Lake Worth to support a teacher. Um, you know, she was a teacher at Highland Elementary, um, excellent teacher. Um, she dedicated her life to the profession. She was diagnosed with cancer. She did seven rounds of chemo. I think it's twenty one rounds of radiation. Now she's unable to work. Um, so we, um, so for this reason, a group of teachers have joined together to help relieve the financial challenges. Um, as to honor the teacher of Lake Worth and support her in a continued fight against cancer. This special event will honor her dedication, kindness and strength with proceeds helping to cover the ongoing medical expenses. Um, what we are asking for from the commission is for a fee waiver for the expense of using the casino ballroom. Um, a ballroom that was initially or originally intended for the people of Lake Worth. And I see no what better way than to show your support for the educators and for a person in need that has given their life to the um profession of education.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. You say three thirty to eight thirty is that setup event and cleanup?
Yes.
The actual event would be how, how long, what times?
Um, so right, five thirty.
Eight thirty.
And we scheduled it with um, through Ms. Riviera, Veronica. Um, so that wasn't on the week of uh, um, bonfire, which is obviously this week. And then the third week is, and this would be on the second week of the month.
Okay, you realize this is a difficult issue for us.
No, absolutely.
Not easy.
I understand.
Um, so we have a motion and a second for discussion, Ms. Malaga.
Okay, I'm sorry, where do you live, sir?
Two thirty one North Elm Street.
So you're resident of Lake Worth Beach?
Correct. My family's been here for eighty five years.
You don't look that old.
No, my, my father went to Lake Worth High in nineteen fifty seven, so.
Um, and where does the, the teacher reside? I don't want to say her name for the record because she's not here.
Um, so in, in Atlanta.
Okay, so as the mayor just said, this puts us in a, in a difficult situation. We had a nonprofit who came before us today with the same request and we don't have a policy. And I've been sitting here for four years and we've never had anyone come before us and ask for this. Um. And it, it is hard on us. So while we do support teachers in today's world of everything that's going on, support from your community is important, but at the same time, we always preach that we have staff costs. We have cost of air conditioning and, you know, my biggest concern was that we're, you're asking for waiver of the insurance policy which covers us. That, that to me doesn't set well. Um, and I'm going to be honest, even the deposit, I'm like, I wish that there would have been a deposit of good faith to us. And then we could have said, you know what? I agree, give them the money back and, but I just didn't, I, it didn't, and I'm being honest, it didn't set well as soon as I'm asking staff for information. Um, so those are my questions is, is this a Lake Worth Beach resident? Because if she's not a Lake Worth Beach resident, my concern is opening this Pandora's box, if we call it, and having people from Green Acres and Palm Springs and everybody want to come use our facilities as a fundraiser for somebody that they know or they worked with who's not a resident. So those are the questions that I have. Thank you for answering, putting your, your address on the record. I appreciate that. Um, and again, I'm not going to put this lady's name out there because that's not important. Um, but that answers, how much are the tickets for the event?
Thirty dollars.
So they're thirty dollars for the ticket that we silent auction and other, um, you know, things to raise money.
And you're anticipating a hundred and fifty people. So I just want you to realize that as a commissioner, I'm thinking of a hundred and fifty plus people going up and down our stairs. Adult beverages, there's a lot of liability there for us.
Sure.
That, that we're open to, which means the public's open to it. So it's a lot for us to sit up here and pontificate on. Thank you.
Mr. McBoy?
Um. I think the mayor raises some not invalid points. I would say that the comment that was made by Mr. Kaler that this is actually, in my opinion, and as I've stated numerous times at commission meetings, exactly the kind of use of a community space to support community things. I think whether the teacher lives in Lake Worth, my recollection uh with um, uh, your predecessor was we did a tour of Lake Worth because many of the teachers, at least at Highland, do not live in Lake Worth. And I think that's probably true of most schools. It's great if they live in the community, but it doesn't happen all that often. So the relevant thing is she was a teacher, longtime teacher in one of our schools and certainly interacted with our families and, and kids. Um. Would there be any flexibility? Um, would there be any flexibility? I see here a insurance cost of one fifty-five, which, and I do hear liability concerns. Does that seem reasonable to you guys pick up the insurance?
Absolutely. So, um, also the police officer, the PBSO officer, if school police were allowed to, you know, be part of that. Um, I know with alcohol being served that that is a concern. So that would be something that we would be willing to put into the.
And are you comfortable similarly with a deposit, which you would, that presumably wouldn't cut into the fundraising aspect because you
Get it back.
Likely get it back.
Yep.
Um, I think with those two things, I'm more than comfortable supporting this and um, I think it's, you know, we want to put our money where our mouth is of supporting the teaching community and obviously, this is a pretty special case.
Thank you. Ms. May?
This is so hard. I, I am a teacher and, um, but I'm also a commissioner and I'm a fiduciary of the city's money.
Yep.
And I'm very concerned about setting a precedent. Because if we say yes to this, then we have to say yes to the next one and the next one and the next one. And I just can't do it.
Okay.
It's not that I don't, I mean, every story that's going to come in front of us is going to be as heartbreaking.
Sure.
Now, I will personally donate two hundred dollars to this cause. But I can't do it with taxpayer money.
Okay.
I mean, can I can even zeal it on this thing right now, but I can't do it with taxpayer money.
Appreciate that.
No, I said.
Twenty?
Uh, Mr. Segridge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so if you leave the refundable deposit out, it's looking at a cost of eighteen twenty-nine. Um, and you guys are bringing in about forty-five hundred dollars in, in, in tickets. Um, hard for me to get to the math of where you're gonna get a caterer and open bar for even forty-five hundred dollars. Um, and I want to echo some of the same concerns. Um, you know, I, I think, um, after we discuss this item, we, we probably should make a motion to institute a fee waiver policy on how these should be judged before they even get to the commission and whether we want to entertain them or stick to our fee schedules. Um, in a lot of cases, it is far easier for us to establish a fee schedule with whatever discounts we we think should be in there for particular circumstances and stick to that so that we can be fair to, to all parties. Um, I did want to echo Commissioner May's, um, offer of donating to, um, I, I would, um, donate to the, to the, this cause. Um, I don't think we should waive the, the entire thing, but I do think we can, can help in, in our own ways in, in, in lessening the burden um, on, on this event. I think thirty dollars for a meal and, and, and open bar is probably cheap.
We are teachers, uh.
Yes, you know, but, but if you, if you bump it up to forty-five. If you bumped it up to forty-five and, and you get some help from up here, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think we can get you there. Um, uh, I just don't want to set the precedent of, of doing an absolute fee waiver on, on this. Um, and a lot's going to change with this property, um, over time. So I would be inclined to decline the, the fee waiver request, but I will get with you uh, on a personal level to support this.
For sure.
Lessen that.
This is something we could use our discretionary funds for as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, um, um, it, it does put us in a, in a position, but this is a woman who did serve our children. Our very needy, God bless you at Highland Elementary or any of our schools. Um, and we did just give Bennys on the Beach fifty thousand dollars. You know, I mean, we did fee waiver for them, essentially a rental waiver for them. So I think we need to be. Yeah, okay, we did add it to the end.
Pretty close.
Um, well, no, he'll have to pay it at some point, but, um, I'd be willing to put in money from my, um, discretionary funds for this. I'd be willing to put in five hundred dollars of my discretionary funds.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and who would that go to? Who would the check be made out to? We have to get Veronica. Highland Elementary as the vendor.
Yeah.
So if we make it to Highland Elementary with a footnote where it goes to.
Right, it's like the safety patrols with the discretionary, the safety, when you donate to the safety patrols in the past, it comes there.
Would, would we be able to instead of, do you like go right to the city to cover the fee?
I'm sorry?
Would we be able to go right to the city to cover the fee, you know, just make it easier?
Well, we can find out, but I'll pledge five hundred dollars.
I would match that.
You'll match that? Okay, so we're at a thousand.
Okay.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we're.
All right.
I'll kick in two fifty because I've already sponsored like five nonprofit events in the past.
Yes, the asks are constant.
Uh, but yeah, we, we have to set a precedent.
Yeah, absolutely. I understand.
Okay, so, um.
What is our current motion?
The motion, you made a motion to approve.
I seconded.
So we need to vote on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
So the motion actually would need to be amended because the motion would be to approve a full, partial, or no waiver of fees. So their mail motion didn't indicate any of the three.
I, I will refine my motion. And my motion would be that we allow the applicants, I'm going to call them, to cover the Tulip Insurance one fifty-five cost to cover the security deposit of a thousand, and hopefully you can come up with that. Um, and that we would waive the rest of it as being consistent with what we want the ballroom to be used for as well as the specific circumstances.
I can't second that because we all just gave money from our, well, three of us gave money from discretionary and Commissioner May gave her own pocket.
We've already covered it. I, I can't second that.
So, um, so you can withdraw your motion. We vote on it. We'll on a second.
So, okay, what, w- 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 you, the proposed alternative motion is that we charge the full fee?
No, you're not.
I, I would make a motion that we do not waive the fees in this case.
And then just accept the three, well, then because they're going to pay for it, so yeah.
We are not going to waive any of the fees.
But we are telling you that we'll.
The kindness of your hearts, you are discretionary funds giving.
So it can happen, but we're not spending taxpayers' money on it.
Okay, great. And the teachers of this will, this will actually help you a lot with the recruiting of good quality teachers to Lake Worth when they see them.
Spread the word that this happened. Questions, we really don't want.
No, and I'd like, I'd like to make a motion after, I mean, you, this is nothing new to you guys, but I'd like to make a motion that um, until we come up with a policy on this, um, no, uh, Mr. Sword, that no more fee waivers come before us.
Understood, and we do have a very robust draft that's gone through two cuts with legal that's almost ready to come forward, that is quantifying and data and measurables.
Okay, so could you, can you guys support that motion?
Second.
Wait, wait, we gotta. Service needs to vote on the.
Oh, my motion, my first motion was to deny the waiver.
Who made the motion?
I did.
No, Chris made the motion. Chris made the motion.
We don't hold it back. No one seconded his motion. It didn't get seconded.
I guess I withdraw it. It didn't, well, it got seconded in its initial version in that there's no support for it. I guess so.
Okay, unless you want to make the motion not to support it, not to, to deny the waiver.
Toward the fund?
Yeah, I'll donate some to it. I, I, I don't think that's the right way to do it. I think we want the city.
I, you do.
Supporting, but, um, not that way. So, so what is the total amount that you folks would be charged? Can somebody clarify? Is it two, two eighty?
No, one fifty-five.
Plus a thousand dollar deposit that they would get back.
Yep.
So that fee would be eighteen.
What, what, wait?
Did you say?
What, what is the total? Forget the donations from discretionary.
Fifteen twenty-nine fifty-five.
No, it's eighteen twenty-nine fifty-five.
Without the, um, insurance, it's one.
No, it's not. It's eighteen twenty-five.
I mean, here's from Stuart, what?
Yeah, so the, the staff cost, or excuse me, the, the venue cost is one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. There is a top-up of a one thousand dollar security deposit for incidental. Correct, so it would be all in twenty-eight hundred dollars and twenty-nine cents. Now, we did receive this on the date the backup was due. So in, you know, the staff, you know, kind of stop what they were doing, did their due diligence and put this together. We did leave out the staff cost, which is estimated at four hundred and twenty-nine dollars for setup, tear down, breakdown. So total all in, I have to do the math on that is.
Twenty-two fifty-eight ninety-five.
Twenty-two.
Plus the thousand dollar deposit.
Is total cost plus, plus a thousand dollars, so thirty-two fifty-eight ninety-five.
Yeah.
What's that? Sure, let's hear your motion.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the waiver with waiving the total of twenty, oh please. Twenty-two eighty-five, twenty-two. Two thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-five cents, which means, wait. It's being waived, but we are paying for it out of our discretionary funds, but we're waiving, we're, we're supporting the waiver of that. They're going to give a thousand dollar deposit. They're going to pay the one fifty-five for the insurance, the thousand dollars they'll give back. We will cover whatever we all said for, out of our discretionary funds to cover the amount that has been waived. Does that make sense?
No, because then we're still waiving something, giving precedent that we waive things.
Or you're giving precedence, you're just coming here, we give our, give our discretionary funds away. It's six and one half dozen the other.
But no, because we've asked for no more of these to come until we have a policy. And with all due respect, it's not a wedding.
Let me call on you, Ms. Malaga. Sorry, okay, um, we're getting excited. Um, I think it should be that we're not waving.
Okay, yes.
So you don't set a precedent.
Right.
And we understand.
What was the fee for staff again? For what?
For thirty-five. The cost estimate for staff is four hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. It would include setup, tear down, and cleaning afterwards.
And that's on top of the twenty-eight hundred?
Correct.
No, it's not. Well, yes.
So then you're looking at roughly thirty-three thousand two hundred somewhere there.
Right. The fat. No.
Hopefully, we're collecting out of our discretionary, but we're not going to come to thirty-two hundred out of that.
It comes to, well, it depends. Right, so they're, they'll get the thousand dollars back if they leave it in good shape. So it's really.
One fifty-five.
Yeah, so, um, the one fifty-five, the thousand dollars.
Yep.
You'll pay for, um, we're going to deny the waiver.
Okay.
But you know what happened here? I think all of us are so much of a.
I'm still have a motion.
I'm, I'm not making a motion, I'm just clarifying where we're at.
Well, I'm, okay, I, I need to be clarified too, because that, I want to know, what are we charging them? They need to know.
A hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Fifty-five and a thousand dollar deposit that then we get back if everything is.
And we're going to come up with as much as we can between us. We've got how much?
Wait a minute.
Five.
So we're, is the proposal that is the proposal, that sounds like we're waiving, which is fine with me. But you're saying that the total charge is a one fifty-five for the insurance plus the deposit. That's the change.
Okay, you're gonna talk the whole thing.
That's, I think, what you said.
Okay, but.
Fine with me, but that's a waiver, which is fine with me too.
That's not fine with me. I want them to, I want them to pay every.
Jamie, Mr. Brown, would you please address the commission?
The, the, the main question, are you guys, I'm losing my voice. Uh, are you guys going to do a waiver or not?
No, I'm not.
Because that was where you were going. So we're, we're hearing different things. So are they only going to be charged the Tulip Insurance plus the thousand dollar deposit?
No.
And, and, and then we're waiving anything above that, or are we saying there is no waiver? And you guys are then going to do the discretionary?
Yeah, now, let me just, yeah, I think we're, I think at least three of us, I think, are at, don't waive it, help them out. Now, the, the next question, though, this begs the question of, so, you know, the answer is like, we're not going to waive it. Correct. But then the question is, how much are, how much will they have to spend depending on how much? Maybe we should do the motion not to waive and then take it after then.
Okay, why don't we make the motion that we're not going to waive any of it?
So, sorry, Madam Mayor, there is a, there is a motion on the table, amended motion made by Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Segridge to deny a waiver of the fees for the usage of the casino ballroom is the motion on the table.
Oh, perfect. Let's vote on that.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That's a, of denying the waiver.
Correct.
Nay.
Okay. Now, let's talk in real dollars.
Okay.
You know, Mr. Segridge is pledging five hundred?
Five hundred.
I'm doing five hundred, so that's a thousand.
That's a thousand.
How much? Two fifty? Keep adding, I'm not going to math.
Twelve fifty.
Two hundred.
She gave two hundred.
And Mr. McBoy, I think.
That's fourteen fifty.
Five hundred. Five hundred for Mr. McBoy, so where are we?
Okay, so what is the total?
That's what we're, that's what she's doing.
No, 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 the total is separate from what we're putting in, so.
That's what we're doing right now. You're going to have to put up some money.
That's nineteen fifty, and then it was twenty-two fifty-eight, you said, right? So that's the difference.
But with the thousand.
Twenty-two fifty-eight.
Oh, yeah.
Three, two, five, eight, yeah.
It's about four hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, that's the best we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Send a great message to.
At the bottom of our hearts.
Send the math in.
No, no. That you appreciate teachers in Lake Worth Beach.
Thank you.
And we thank you.
Thank you.
I am one.
Exactly.
Thank you, May.
Here.
Did it right then and there. You clicked that button, and we thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. So.
You know, tell us.
No, I know, but will they send this money to us or is it gonna?
Well, Shona, she's going to hear what happened tonight, and she'll do the paperwork to do it.
Okay.
Well, whether we're close to the city or to the school, I don't know.
I'd say do it to the.
Uh, that doesn't, it's not up to us. It's.
Yeah, that's operations.
Right, that's operations. Thank you.
We, we'll address that, and then if you're doing your.
I'm separate. You don't have to do anything with me. Mine's done. I already done it.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
And, yeah, and it's the casino. They can do it at Lantana Pizza for a lot cheaper.
All right, love the side comments. Let's stop the chat.
Um, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe there was also consideration of a motion made by Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Segridge, to not consider any further waivers of fees until a fee waiver policy is established.
I, I hate policies like that. I think Stuart said yes because he's already left.
All right, so, so all in favor?
Aye.
Was it?
We're not.
Not bring us anymore of these.
Until we talk about it anymore.
Except for the for the children one, if it has to come back because it was on this thing.
Yeah, and like Stuart said, we, we currently have something in draft format. We're finalizing that we'll be able to push forward all the way guys.
Excellent.
Moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, D, agreement with RMJ Contractors for the Youth Empowerment Center renovations in Oswalt Community Center Reboot Project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
For the record, CDVG, that's what that was.
I'm sorry, yep.
CBG. CBG. Thank you very much.
We clarify for the, but who was what?
Wait, Ms. May made a motion?
No, Ms. May didn't make any motion.
No, Miss May didn't make any motion. Malika McBoy.
Malika, Malika McBoy, I should write that down as they come up. Next up, agreement with Verizon Connect NFW Inc. for fleet tracking and safety subscription.
Point of order?
What?
I waived the waiting of my comment card for the last agenda item.
Sorry, sorry about that. Would you welcome to make a comment? I'm sorry about that. This last one, the waiver. You, Ms. Ramsey, you're welcome to do it. I mean, we voted, but you, you took, okay, thank you. I, um.
Do you have to talk about this one anyway?
Oh, okay, she's going to come up anyway. Which one now?
Verizon, okay.
Sit right here.
Agree, yeah, really, don't go away, what? Um, uh, E. Where are we?
Motion to.
Agreement, okay, then motion to approve.
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a second?
Second for a question.
Public comment?
Question? Miss Malika? Is this going to include rear cameras, or is this just dash cams?
So, it depends on the vehicle, for, this is our, our white fleet, which is half ton and under, uh, which would just be, be not, not rear cameras for our white fleet. Now, our bucket trucks and the electric utility, our heavy equipment for, uh, solid waste, those all have rear-facing cameras as well. This is more for, uh, GPS.
Okay, we'll let, um, Miss McBoy.
Over my dead body.
Miss McLeod talking.
Ramsey McLeod, twenty four South C Street. In going through the backup material, notice it stated was for, it was stated for our operational fleet, and that these services will help the city improve fleet management, reduce liability, enhance safety concerns, safety oversight across departments. My question is, it doesn't list the individual departments, so you've just given some insight as to the vehicle size, but does that include our code enforcement officers' vehicles?
Yes, it does. That's all white fleet, which is half ton and under. So all of our basic passenger vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Segridge?
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't call on you.
I, I just had a, a, a quick question on, on what Commissioner Malaga said. So I, I do see that there are sixty five vehicles on this that are getting rear and two sides. So, does that mean that it's the dump trucks in there, or part of the white fleet gets that?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
About sixty five of the vehicles, it shows it gets a rear and two side subscription for sixty dollars. As well as the extended monitor, so i- it's roughly seventy dollars per vehicle.
Yeah, my bad, so those would be the, uh, half to, well, half ton to one ton. We basically have three classifications of vehicles here, the over one ton, sorry, heavy equipment, half ton to one ton, and then the white fleet that we refer to as the half ton and under.
So those would be like the twenty five hundreds and things, things like that.
So, so the larger trucks that are not considered to heavy equipment.
And as part of this monitoring, um, does, does this? Who, who is actually monitoring like the, the GPS? Because one, one of the concerns that, that we get from residents are, hey, I was going by, you know, um, Whole Foods or, or Publix in Lantana, and I saw a Lake Worth Beach truck just parked there. Or, you know, I was driving around and I, you know, came across a park and there was a code vehicle there for several hours. Um, is there some sort of real-time tracking and, and access for department managers to be monitoring this? Is, is there any kind of monitoring of where these vehicles are going in real time, or is this purely for data gathering in case there's an accident and, and risk mitigation thereafter?
Both. So the department managers will have, this is going to be, um, obviously, IT is the input for this and has the master account. Um, the department managers do have the ability to monitor, um, in real time. Um, depending on the department and the actual operation itself, like it's solid waste, for example, we utilize the breadcrumb, breadcrumbs, because we need to know, uh, how far we are into a route at that point in the day, so we know exactly, are we going to finish on time? Are we not going to finish, what the issue is, so that is utilized. You don't need that for code, for example. We also have the geofencing setup for solid waste, because when a vehicle exits our city limits, they're typically going to the transfer station, SWA. We want to know how long they're outside of our city limits and what that round trip is, so if it's an extra amount of time, we need to find, figure out what's going on, is it a little line of the transfer station, whatever. You obviously don't need that for code compliance, but managers are able to track exactly where vehicles are, where they've been, depending on the department.
On geofencing, why wouldn't we need that for code compliance? Wouldn't we want to know if a code compliance vehicle exited our city?
Well, you'll be able to tell when any vehicle exits the city.
Okay.
But for purposes for solid waste, for example, we actually track that actual time, they're, they're actually outside of our limits, because that tells us what that, uh, roundabout time is to the transfer station back on any given day.
Okay, so are, are there plans for like code enforcement to have kind of a, like a better description, like a big screen in, in the offices somewhere where, where this can be monitored, or is it the managers are going to have to log into a software on their laptop and check it when they wish to check it?
That's going to be kind of dependent on that, that particular department. Solid waste, we have a massive screen, um, in the office, like, I think it's like ninety some inches, that shows our entire city and, and every single vehicle where it is. I know the same thing for, uh, the electric utility. I'm not sure how codes are going to have it set up, but again, that's part of the department operational stuff, so.
Okay.
Um, so a code enforcement officer, I mean, if they want to grab lunch, they can't like cross the West Palm Beach line and go to. Or, I was going to say Bud's. Can they, are they not allowed to do that?
Typically, you don't exit the city in city vehicles unless you are attending meetings or something like that.
Official business.
So typically, you, you want to stay within city, and if you are, you're on a break and you're in your personal vehicle.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, we have F, Resolution sixty seven dash twenty twenty five, reallocation of project funding for the pier restaurant re roofing project.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second by May.
Thank you, all, um, uh, Ram, Miss McLeod, with public comment?
And I have a public comment as well, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Hang on a minute. Ramsey McLeod, twenty four South C Street. I went through the backup material but could not find out what projects GV two two zero six and GV two, two five zero seven are, and what the impact is on these two projects if the reallocation is approved. You are wanting to take away over a hundred thousand dollars away from them, and residents have a right to know what is being put, quote, on the back burner in order to complete this re roofing project. Can you provide a detail of what the two projects are?
They're in the, uh, backup exhibit A.
They weren't in my backup online.
They're on the, the budget analysis. They're, they're both already, already allocated to the pier, but just different portions of the pier.
Okay, because I didn't see that in the backup I sent.
It's on the last page.
This page.
Madam Clerk?
Sam Smith, one oh nine North Palm Way. I'm not against the re roofing project for Bennys on the beach, but I am against the city giving Bennys two months of free rent. That rent money, fifty thousand dollars, could have gone into the beach fund and helped to pay for this type of project. Last time I submitted a comment about this project, I mentioned some of you receiving campaign donations from the owner of Bennys. You responded to my comment, which is against our rules, but I went back and double-checked the facts. The owner of Bennys did in fact contribute five thousand dollars to Prosper Lake Worth, uh, Lake Worth PAC, and that PAC did in fact send, spend money on certain current commissioner's behalf by sending out attack flyers directed to your opponents. All of this is public record, so please don't pretend that you didn't benefit from Bennys campaign contributions, and please don't pretend that those ca- campaign, uh, that's the end of the comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Except we didn't, we just, as I was reminded, it's still paid. Mr. Brown, I got a light on.
Uh, yeah, just wanted to, um, make sure to, to be clear. So the project itself is already approved, back in September, as it says, uh, this is just a matter of solidity accounts, so we can kind of cleaning up the, the accounting side of things, so, that's all.
Don't say house. I have noticed that. Gee. Um, all fi- all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're onto the, or the referendums, okay. Okay, G is, um, first reading of the referendum, the ordinance twenty.
Can I make a motion really quickly?
Yeah.
So if we are going to finish these tonight, can we combine them into one things, or so that we don't start, we can't start something after ten forty five?
Correct.
So can we, can I make a motion then to, um?
All of them?
No, to, uh, waive that ten forty five deadline for tonight to make sure we get through these, um, referenda, because they all kind of go together. Would you guys be okay with that?
We previously made a motion to combine stuff like this.
Yeah, we have. Mr. Brown?
Well, I wanted to put this to Glenn, because since these are separate.
No, I don't want to put them together. All I want to do is say, let's make sure we finish these, because right now, the ten forty five, we can't start a new mo- motion after ten forty five, that's going to limit this. So if, I mean, it would be great if it didn't, but can we waive that, because it's one of our procedural rules?
You can waive your rule that says you could start an item up until eleven P M, or ten fifty eight.
Yeah, so let's just take away the ten forty five, um, can't start something so that we get these done. Yeah, nothing, we're going to be done at eleven.
I'll read fast.
I know, I know. Uh, well, I was just trying to make sure that our work gets done.
Yeah, um, so we're going to, motion to waive the rules to, I think just to allow us to finish these items.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Mr. McBoy?
No, I think these are rushed anyhow.
Thank you, okay. Um, so it's four to one to, uh, just allow us to finish this, this time. So, uh, ordinance twenty five nineteen, please read by title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five nineteen of the City of Lake Worth Beach Florida calling for a referendum on the qual- of the qualified electeds of the City of Lake Worth Beach available on March tenth, twenty twenty six, as to whether section ten of article four of the City of Lake Worth Beach Charter shall be repealed, right for notice and advertising of a referendum providing reference to the outline with submission of the vote, right for referendum canvassing, right for accessibility, complication, should the referendum pass for clear conflicting laws that end in effect today.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Miss Malaga?
Second.
Second by Mr. Um, Segridge, um, all. Is there, I'm asking?
I'm reminding you.
Okay, do you have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, I have one on, I believe, all of the rest, but not on this one.
Okay, great. So, um, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. H, next up.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash twenty of the City of Lake Worth Beach Florida calling for referendum of the qualified electeds of the City of Lake Worth Beach Florida available on March tenth, twenty twenty six, as to whether section two of article three of the City of Lake Worth Beach Charter shall be amended to provide that election results are certified on Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections, right for notice and advertising of the referendum, right for the ballot language with submissions of voters, right for referendum canvassing, practice of ability, complications of the referendum pass.
Could you repeat that? Motion to approve.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
I'm sorry, I have a comment. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Mr. Segridge. And Miss.
And second was the Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I have one comment. Uh, Todd Ketchum, two two five South K Street, Department One. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. We should amend the charter to allow the Supervisor of Elections to certify election results. As it stands now, failure to do this will allow for legal challenges to referendum results. Based on violation of the city charter, I encourage the commission to move forward with this referendum to forestall this eventuality. That's the only comment.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up is I, twenty five, twenty twenty five, twenty one, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash twenty one of the City of Lake Worth Beach Florida calling for referendum of the qualified electeds of the City of Lake Worth Beach available on March tenth, twenty twenty six, as to whether section three of article two of the City of Lake Worth Beach Charter shall be amended to provide that city-owned property east of the A one A roadway may be leased for ninety nine years for purposes other than lodging and residential uses, right for not, notice and advertising of the referendum, right for outline with submission of the voters, right for referendum canvassing, right for accessibility, complications of the referendum pass, for hills, with laws that end in effect today.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, Madam, I'm going to ask, uh, for public comment first. We have a couple of public comments, and I, I'm quite sure there's one for Madam Clerk, and my lights on. And your lights on, so let's get the public comment first. Now, I, I see lights. Let's just get the public comment done, and then we'll go forward. So Jenny Powell, Catherine Colmeyer.
Jenny Powell, two two four North Palm Way. Um, I've had this concern before, as you know. Um, I think we need to bring back the Charter Review Committee and do this the right way. I, in spite of what I think Commissioner Se- Segridge said at one time, is that this is pretty straightforward. Uh, I'm, I'm, in, in regard to, well, I guess just this one for now, but, um, I, I think in, in spite of him saying that, I, I don't think residents do fully understand what the impact. I, I am pleased to see, I, I assume the attorney read, uh, the exact wording of the amendment. I don't know if that's final, but he did say excluding lodging and something else.
Residential.
So that's good, but I, I still, I'm not sure I fully understand the impact of this. If we're not doing lodging and residential, why do we need a ninety nine year lease for anything? I, I don't know. I really need somebody to explain that, and I think it would be, it's appropriate for you to explain that to the residents. There's been almost zero effort to explain any of the charter amendments, and I think that's uh, not fair to the residents. Um, so, um, it just seems like a moot point to raise terms of the lease.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Colmeyer?
Catherine Colmeyer, uh, five zero three First Avenue South. There were two town halls about, supposedly about the charter amendments, um, after there was public comment made that we needed information, the public needed information before this should be put on, um, the ballot. The first town hall, Commissioner May said she wanted to hear from people, and she didn't want to present herself. Um, she didn't want to make a presentation herself on the details of the charter amendments, so people spoke, a lot of people spoke, and I was there. I think it was overwhelmingly, please consider these amendments, please do not put them on this coming March ballot. Please have a charter review committee. Please do not go through with this. That was an overwhelming um, consensus of people who, a lot of people came, a lot of interest in this topic. Uh, no one has taken any notice of those comments, obviously. And then, um, there was a town hall meeting that Commissioner Segridge hosted at the golf club that, um, barely touched on the charter amendments. He had a long, you know, list of other things to talk about first, and very little information was given about it and what it might mean, except that he did say it was pretty straightforward. Um, I think there should be a charter review committee. I think this is a very significant change for our city. A ninety nine year lease is a very long time. We will all be long dead, um, before that lease runs out. Um, so, and if it excludes lodging and residential, I also fail to understand the advantages to a developer of a ninety nine year lease, and I would really like to understand that. So, um, please do not put this on the ballot. This is being rushed through without the public.
Thank you, that's tough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I see a few lights. Aaron's first.
Um, I have public comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, please do it.
Um, Alexander Katakis, one four two four North L Street. The proposed ballot summary language for this amendment regarding lease terms east of A one A is misleading and does not accurately reflect how the charter would actually be amended if the electors vote in favor. The ballot summary states in pertinent part, in order to reduce the city's maintenance costs of city facilities. However, the charter amendment, if approved, reads in, in pertinent part, proceeds from the lease of any city-owned property east of A one A shall be used exclusively for the benefit of such property. First, I've spoken to neighbors who seem to think that monies earned from leasing our land east of A one A will he, help Lake Worth Beach fund activities in the city, improve public parks and streets, among other benefits to the city. The charter amendment, as you all propose it explicitly, explicitly prohibits this from happening. The ballot language needs to be clear and precise for the voters. Second, why is the mayor and this commission promoting a charter amendment that would limit how the city can use the proceeds from the lease of our public land? You all have stated this amendment is necessary because the current charter is prohibitive. You, you are proposing an amendment that is prohibitive and worded in a way that confuses your constituents. Vote no to this current ballot language or change the proposed amendment language so that the city can use the proceeds of any lease however we so choose. Todd Ketchum, two two five South K Street, Department One. I am in favor of the proposed referendum going to ballot in March of twenty twenty six. The language is both sufficient and clear for the voters of the city to decide if longer lease terms are appropriate east of A one A. And the last comment on this item, Diane Brown, nine oh five North Lakeside Drive. Increasing the lease length to ninety nine years, that will be the year twenty one twenty four. We will all be dead, and our children will be dead also. You might all as well give our beachfront away. Fifty year lease is more reasonable. I do not trust any commission to decide what happens at our beachfront for ninety nine years. Please vote this down. I would encourage you to bring back the Charter Review Committee. That's the last comment on this item.
Thank you, and I'm just going to make a, I'm going to make a comment. Uh, I read Mr. Kichik, Kichik, this is Kichik's uh, comment, and I, I read that, and I, I called him, we spoke this afternoon for quite a while, and what he, um, uh, we are not imposing, and I, I looked at the old charter amendment that was done a few years ago, two thousand nineteen. We are not imposing any restrictions. The only thing that this charter amendment will do is increase the life of the lease. The language of the current, um, charter, which was done in two thousand nineteen, is where it's, is where it says, we're not proposing this, this is what it is now. Proceeds from any lease shall be used exclusively for the benefit of such property. And when I spoke with a couple, you know, staff members and stuff, that was done by the, you know, in two thousand nineteen. And I think there was a reason for that, because the money we have, the mon- it, it just says the money from anything, if we ever get any profits from, uh, east of A one A, would be just used for the beach, for that property, for that benefit. So it's not anything. So it's not anything new that we're having. This is the established language. We're just asking to increase the time of the lease. So I just, I hope that he's listening and then that clears that up because it's, it's, that's existent the way it is now. We're not changing it. Uh, we're not proposing to change it. So I'm gonna take, um, uh, comments. It's ten thirty four. We're allowed to go how far? Oh, until this is over? All right, let's, let's.
No, we're not gonna vote up.
I'm sorry?
No.
I think we're gonna finish it. What?
We're not gonna just stop in the middle of it.
Well, we're gonna, I think we're just gonna keep going. Um, until the end. Um, so we each get um, two minutes. Um, so, okay. Mr. McBoy, two minutes?
I call point of order that we are going to talk about something that affects the most important part of our city for a hundred years. And you're telling the elected officials that their voters only get two minutes of comment on that. That is ludicrous and crappy government. You have heard clearly from the community, multiple ways, multiple meetings where people came here. You've heard ahead town halls, all of them said, bring back the Charter Review Committee. All of them said, you're rushing this. All of them said, this is a actually, all of them is not correct. A majority, clear majority in all of those occasions said, there's no reason to rush this. There's no reason to do this if it's not a developer giveaway. And people have pointed out that the current situation says that if you want to do something, you bring a proposal, a specific proposal, and the community gets to comment on it. Not that you give, open the door, the barn door wide open, say, anybody who wants to do anything for ninety nine years is fair to go. And again, Mayor, you stating that, well, this doesn't do anything about restricting the funds to only at the beach. This only says ninety nine years. That is not being clear to the community. Something else has already restricted it. The community is kind of being told or made to perhaps think that, well, you know, we really need to develop our most valuable property and generate money off of it. So it'll help pave the roads in the city or it'll fix this, it'll fix that. No, our rules say that you can't do that. So it should be very clear that that's part of the package deal here. Is that you're giving away ninety nine years. You're not putting any restrictions and allowing the community to vote on the specific project. And the money that's generated can't be used in the rest of the city. And you're ignoring willfully, this commission, the rest of the commissioners are ignoring willfully the reality, which is that some developer will guaranteed get up and spend a lot of money convincing people this is gonna do all sorts of wonder things. There's nothing to prevent them from saying, oh, this money will go to the rest of the city. It will be a burden on the residents to say, hey, developer, actually what you said is not true because there's no
Madam Mayor, that's two minutes.
So my two minutes for a ninety nine year thing, I hope that the rest of you are ashamed of what you're doing.
Thank you.
I hope.
Mister, uh, Ms. May?
Thank you. Um, I just, I, I, I want to make sure that we understand that it says for a lease up to ninety nine years. It doesn't say a ninety nine year lease, so it could be a thirty years, fifty years, sixty, seventy, whatever. In addition, we have the, um, this, I believe, is the most democratic way to do it because we're not making a decision to give a ninety nine year lease. We're making a decision to allow citizens to make the decision. That's all we're doing.
Platform for development.
We are not discussing, please. You had your time.
So I think that it is the most, um, democratic way is to have this referendum out and people can make their decision.
Mr. Segridge?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try to be quick. Um, I do agree with the public comment about, um, a concern about limiting this proceeds to just be for the beach property because a development that could help the, the rest of the city, um, restricting these funds just to the beach property, I, I think is a mistake. So I would, I would ask, and if, if you guys agree that, that we amend the motion to strike that sentence such that those proceeds can be used elsewhere within the city if that's what we need to do as a city.
That severely changed. I don't know how there's any support for that, but, um, we would the language obviously would have to be changed.
It would be eliminating the last sentence.
Um, um, okay, I, um, my, I'll take my minute. Um, if we don't have the opportu, it's been, it's been said to me by a few people, let a developer come and if we like the development, then we'll vote for the ninety nine years. The reality is, uh, no developer is gonna spend the amount of money that it takes to do a full blown, votable proposal. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. If they don't know that there's even the chance that they can get it, if they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and we don't have this charter, we're, we're not gonna get those kinds of proposals.
With all due respect, Mr. Segridge didn't get us two minutes.
Oh, did he? I thought he was done.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Done. No, go ahead. Then you got, he's got some, he's got some seconds left.
No, I was, I was trying to see if, um, we have, uh, the appetite or consensus to eliminate that last sentence. Eliminating your last sentence, so eliminating proceeds from any lease of the city owned property east of A one A shall be used exclusively for the benefit of such property. Eliminate that, that sentence.
Wait, where, where are you reading that? That's a separate.
No, 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 it's in the absolute.
Page three.
On the next page.
On the next page.
Yeah, I can answer that.
So you're, you're looking at the ballot language. The next page is the actual charter.
So you, you could add that to that ballot language?
Right.
Okay.
No, all you do is take that out. Wouldn't have to add anything to the ballot language.
But the ballot language is just, and I'm not arguing. The ballot, please let me, please just let me speak. Um, the proposal that we have in our amend, in our language does not involve anything but the ninety nine year lease. I think what we're asking is can we amend that language that's before us tonight? And say the ninety nine year lease and also at the same time add the language to remove the prohibition.
That would be a separate.
Well, for first, first reading, I, I think you can do that. It will change the language to say something along the lines of and removing the restriction on use of the language on such property.
Right.
Something like that. But if that's your intent, you can remove that part of that as well.
Okay, do I have consensus to do that?
Yes.
Consent. Okay.
So just, just to be clear though, so we're gonna have those two as part of one?
Correct.
Okay.
However, yeah, I mean.
Doesn't have that restriction, so it would be appropriate for them to not.
Right.
That's not going on the ballot. That's only in the ordinance.
Yes, it will go on the ballot.
That's why I wanted to clarify. So, so this actual question we would add to that, that we would also be removing that restriction from the charters would be two things, the ninety nine year lease and the removal of that language from.
Two separate questions or is it together?
All in the same question.
Okay.
Same question.
We'll have to stay in the seventy five words.
Right.
Ask a clarifying question to the attorney.
Mr. Segridge has his light on. We'll, we'll let him go first and then you can.
And in, in terms of the actual language, at least in my opinion, I think it does address that because it talks about the city's maintenance costs, not the beach complex's maintenance costs. It talks about the whole cities. Um, so.
Wait, what, wait, the old?
In, in order to encourage private investment and redevelopment of city owned property and reduce the city's maintenance costs of silly cities' facilities. So in that language, it's talking about the entire city's maintenance cost and the entire city's
So.
facility. So I, personally, I feel that it's somewhat okay if, if our attorney feels we need to massage it, but I don't really think there's much difference.
Because the, the actual
They are changing.
Thing does.
Maybe removal of the limitation, but I think.
So.
Limitation, exactly.
Okay, ma'am, how are we doing for time? We got a few left to do.
Minutes.
Uh, we still have uh, Vice Mayor. He has two minutes and the mayor has a minute and twenty one seconds left.
McBoy?
He's done.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question to the attorney?
Yes.
Normally, when we have first readings and second readings, if it's a minor change to the language, we allow that to go through on the first reading. This seems like it's a pretty major change to the language, which means the public hasn't seen it before. Are we allowed to do that?
Yes.
I believe that you can because again, your title does say maybe leased for up to ninety nine. You're talking about this ninety nine years east of A one A. So I don't think you make such a big change between first and second. I don't think you could change it at second.
Right.
At this point, I think you can change it.
And it's less restrictive rather than more restrictive. I'm calling the question. All in favor?
Hi.
Nate.
Hey, next up is H, no. Um, where are we?
Done.
J, okay. Twenty twenty five, twenty two, first reading.
Or just number twenty twenty five dash twenty two, the city of Lake Worth Beach, Florida calling for a referendum to qualify elections of the city of Lake Worth Beach to be held on March ten twenty twenty six as to whether section four of article two of the city of Lake Worth Beach charter shall be amended to provide that city owned property west of the A one A roadway to the lagoon. Downtown and public parks within the city may be leased up to ninety nine years, writing for notice and advertising of referendum. Writing required ballot language with submissions of voters, writing for referendum canvassing, private severability, complication, should the referendum pass, repeal conflicting laws and ineffective data.
Thank you very much. Um, do I have a, I see we have public comment. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, let's look public. Ma'am, do you have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I have two.
Okay, and I have two. Ms. Powell and Ms. Colmeyer.
Jenny Powell, two, two, four, North Palm Way. Um, I'm gonna assume the conversation is gonna be very similar. Sometimes it's hard to make comments when we have to get up first to make our public comment after you all have made your comments. Um, but I'm gonna say that the most democratic way to do this would be to send it to the Charter Review Committee first and have a committee to review it, discuss it, and come away with a decision on whether it should go to the voters. Of, of course, it should go to the voters if they say yes to these, um, changes. But, um, as has been said many times or a number of times before, developers are gonna come forward with a massive campaign for what they might want. And ninety, it's up to ninety nine years, it's ninety nine years. I mean, it could be lower, but essentially we're letting them have it for ninety nine years. So, um, that's the most democratic thing. Take it to the Charter Review. That's what a number of comments has said. If I said before, I have come before you at a very early point. Catherine said overwhelmingly, the, the decision or the comments were to send it to a Charter Review or not put it on the ballot at all. Um, I just don't understand why you're doing this, why we can't wait a little while for the Charter Review Committee to discuss this and make a decision and then send it to put it on the ballot if that's what they so decide. Um, I just think this is, uh, very unfair. Very unfair and irrational. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam, uh, Ms. Colmeyer?
It almost sounded like you said Madam Colmeyer.
That's what I said, Madam Clerk. Realized, missed.
Catherine Colmeyer, five oh three First Avenue South. Um, I find Commissioner May's, um, definition of increasingly democratic fascinating, but at the moment voters can um, I think when I say fascinating, I truly mean that. Because at the moment voters can vote on any separate proposal about development of the beach. That's what the charter amendment says. And so take that away with one vote to increase the lease time up to ninety nine years. And once you've had that vote, people, that's it. After that, any decision about a development is up to the commission. This commission was not elected on changing the charter amendment lease times to ninety nine years. This commission never mentioned that in their, um, election, electioneering. And this commission has frequently ignored public comment. And they seem to take the attitude that we are kind of just really annoying when we come up and make these comments. This is decreasing the democratic participation of our citizens. One vote and done is not the same as having to consider any proposition. And when the mayor says that no developer is going to take the trouble to bring a proposition, I dispute that because if it's a worthy and good development for the city and if it really is fantastic, then they can present it to the public and the public may indeed vote for it. What you're saying is you do not trust the public to make these decisions and Commissioner Segridge did make those comments at his town hall that the public are not really qualified and don't really understand how things work. And that we don't really understand how much we need development in the city, but we live here and you work for us.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Todd Ketchum, two, two, five, South K Street, Department One submitted the same comment as he did for the previous one in favor. And then Diane Brown, um, wrote that uh, the ninety nine year lease is a giveaway to developers. Ninety nine year lease is too long. Would you trust any city commission to make a ninety nine year lease? Vote no. Please bring back the Charter Review Committee.
Thank you. Uh, how, we have one more after this. How are we for time? We have ten minutes.
All the time in the world.
We stop at eleven. Um, okay, so we're gonna have, no, wait, finish. What? Okay, I see, I see lights on. No. Um, okay, I'm gonna call on folks. Um, I just wanna keep an eye on the, tell us about two minutes each. Okay, two minutes. Uh, Madam Clerk, you'll keep track of the time.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Madam Malaga.
Thank you. Um, my question is, I read this and yes, I had brain surgery five weeks ago, so maybe I'm a little dumb. Found it on the east and west and all that. What do we own that's west of A one A to the lagoon?
That's triple N. It's just.
I, I, I need to know because the language is there and I looked at the map and I'm like, what do we?
No, no, no.
Folks really, let's. I'm asking staff. I don't, so that's number one. Number two, we have land and property that I've heard the city, the, the mayor say that, you know, we need a new town hall, we need and then the property, it says it stops at the east side of Dixie Highway, which would not include the building we're sitting in, which would not include Compass, which would not include PBSO or the fire department, which to me are the things that need to be redeveloped. So, a, and I just need clarification. Am I reading this wrong? Because I read it, I reread it, I wrote it out, I looked it in my app and I just, I don't know why the language is written the way it is when it comes to the boundaries. Um, I, I see the clarification for what the downtown is. But to me, property west of A one A roadway to the lagoon, public parks within the city and downtown, and then it stops down. We have been fighting for years for inclusivity of the west side. And I, I'm, I'm gonna be an advocate to say this should include city owned parcels to A one A. From A one A to the roundabout. Because I think that we're sitting on some of the, the best property that needs to have triple P's. And I don't know why the language is written this way. And I, again, I haven't attended all the meetings and I own that.
That's right.
So if anybody can give me some guidance in regards to why we wrote it this way or what the, the language was, or did I miss a conversation?
Well, that's what the language currently is.
No, what I'm saying, but when we, when we voted on this, I was on Zoom and again, I don't know if I missed a, a conversation on why.
I think you raised an interesting point. I think you raised a good point. Um, and I, let's address. Um, let's talk about that issue for just a second. Mr. Segridge and then Mr. McBoy?
Yep, so, so really quick, um, the, the, the boundaries are kind of wonky, but those areas you are talking about are not restricted because they fall outside those boundaries. So we can do whatever we want already to this building and anything west of, of Dixie. Um, I, I do agree with you. Um, this language could be simpler. I, I would like, I had in my notes that I would just like it to be amended to allow city property west of A one A.
Yeah.
Dot, dot, dot.
Take off.
Take out all the other boundaries and that all makes it confusing and simplify this greatly. West of A one A. This is what it applies to.
Okay.
Yep. I could support that.
So that would be more definite that we're including the west side of the city.
Correct, even, even though right now it, it is included because there really are no, it makes it very.
Again, that exclusionary code that Mr. Waters was talking about.
So let's, let's keep moving.
Can we do that one? Just make it everything west of A one A.
Yeah, let me think about that one. I mean, if I can, I will.
Okay.
So we're just deleting to the lagoon, to be leased up to, or I'm sorry, to the lagoon.
Just take out to, to the. Well, no, no, then you also have to take out the east and on the west by east side of Dixie Highway, that has to come out.
And section four.
Section, article two, section four. I'm just saying in the black part.
Mister, Mister, uh.
He's talking about city parks. One thing that's mentioned.
But there's a. In the old one, in the old, uh.
Right. Um, but let me, let me think about that if I can, well. I'm a little more hesitant on this one than the last one. Because you specifically are talking about city parks in the. Part, but let me think about it.
Okay, but.
But if I can.
Fallback position.
If I can, I'll make the changes that you've suggested.
And if not. Mr. McBoy, so I'll call in just a second. Um. Okay, so you understand what we're going for.
Right, it, it. If I can, I'll take those words out and make it more simple.
Okay, but we have, don't we have to read something tonight? Don't we have to pass it first?
You can pass votes to adopt this. And with the simplified language, if legally sufficient.
Okay, with the condition.
Is there a way just to leave that other language in there where you would have? Um. Like rechar to be amended to allow city parks, city property downtown and city property west of A one A to release for up to ninety nine years.
That's what I said, take out two of them.
So you're literally, you're taking out the three words. To the lagoon.
Yes.
That's a lot easier.
That's all what we said.
Okay, I, I thought it was, they got everything other than west of A one A, so I misunderstood.
Oh, no.
No, but I don't, I don't, all we need is this thing. Okay, so we're having Mr. Segrich and then Mr. Yes, did you have a follow up question, Mr. Segrich?
Yeah, so, so we're removing city parks, city property downtown and onto the lagoon.
Taking out two of them.
Yeah, just the words to the lagoon is what I just heard. I thought. You meant all those other words too.
Yeah, my, my suggestion was just to simplify that and make it west of A one A and that makes it clear that.
I'd say west of A one A.
It should be west of A one A period.
Here.
Yeah, I, I was just attempting to simplify it because all of the boundary definitions, once you say west of an A one A become irrelevant. So section four could be whittled down to something very clear and concise. Whereas right now it's got all those extra boundaries and I feel that people might find that confusing.
But that's what we're asking him to do is to take them out. So it would be passing it on first reading, ninety nine years west of A one A. Period.
But again, when I, when I hear Commissioner May say, I'm agreeing with this, taking out to the lagoon is an easy one. That taking out the other two, a little bit of this because they're specifically called out in the charter.
Right, the public parks.
B, this is downtown, this is actually, C, this is public parks. So I, I just need to think about that. If, if you guys want to go that far. That's the question. I'm hearing two different directions. One say simplified by take out to the lagoon. And another is that stake simplified by taking out to the lagoon, city parks and downtown words.
Well.
And I believe they both achieve the same thing because, you know, they, they, they both describe the same area of land. I believe leaving in all the extraneous definitions makes it extremely confusing for people to try to interpret. So I would rather, even if we had to come back for a first reading again on this one. In particular, I would rather do that and have a much simpler. Charter and item.
We don't have time.
But couldn't it be just.
Do we have time for another?
I'm not sure what the surprise elections deadline is. You're getting close to her deadline.
So you're saying line one thirty four, take that out in the charter.
What are you talking about?
Under definitions, it says west of A one A roadway shall mean lands bounded on the east by state road A one A. And the west by Lakewood Lagoon, that has to come out of the charter.
Western. Produce.
Line one thirty four. Under definitions.
Well, here's the thing, it is specifically in item B, it says on the west to Dixie Highway. And I think if we take, you know, if we just says, and on the west, you know, and with the west by. City, um. Boundary.
Where do you see that?
Uh, line number. Where do I see this? Uh, line one thirty nine on the west by Dixie Highway east side. East side of Dixie Highway. So if we take that, if we just, if we make that language just to the. City, west boundary of the city, I think that would take, make it clearer.
Though because it limits it to Second Avenue North and First Avenue South going north and south.
Well, actually, that's the definition for downtown, so I'm, I'm wrong about that. Oh, here, okay, definition is A, west of A one A, show me the lands bounded on the east by state road A one A and the west by city. Boundary, the west and the west.
Mine, one thirty four is what I said, we should, we have to change the definition of that.
One thirty five, actually, yeah. So we can.
I haven't had a chance to speak.
We're about to call you and it was so late. Mr. McBoy, we have two minutes.
Motion to adjourn because we are at eleven o'clock. We voted to eleven.
Madam Clerk? We voted not to start anything after that.
And we voted to end at eleven.
No, um, is there a second? Mr. Brown? You can't second.
Uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Brown.
So I know you spoke with, um, the supervisor elections, uh, was the date December tenth, if I'm correct?
Yes.
So.
So if this even came back for first reading. On the eighteenth, we can have the second reading on December second and I could make the December tenth deadline.
Thank you.
All right.
Come back to the last two.
We'll come back with the last two.
So I'll second the motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.